Recording in progress.
We're going to get started if you could please rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everybody to our July 7th, 2025 City Council meeting. As you may notice, Councilmember Doring is joining us remotely this evening. Can you hear us, Councilmember? Can we hear you?
I hope so.
Yes, we can. Thank you. Unfortunately, Councilmember Doring recently suffered a serious bicycle accident and is currently undergoing physical rehab. On behalf of the council, we wish him a full recovery. Per doctor's order, he is unable to attend in person, thus he is authorized to participate fully in discussions and votes, so we will recognize him. And also because of Councilmember Doring's remote attendance, we will conduct a roll call vote on all of our policy items this evening. So with that, we begin every meeting with our open comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on items that we will not be taking a public testimony during a public hearing later in the agenda. Each person has up to two minutes to speak for a total of 20 minutes, and I will be keeping track of time through a variety of methods, including the stoplight here and the red timer up above staff. So please know that I may need to cut you off, and because of the limited time, we want to make sure that others have an opportunity to speak. And I'd also request that each speaker be concise to allow more people to speak, and participants are also encouraged to limit comments generally to topics that are within the scope and jurisdiction of the council's ability to affect policy. If you, councilmembers will not respond directly to public comment, but if you have items or material or need to be in touch with city teammates, please share with our city clerk's office to my right here. With that, I will call on folks as they signed up, and we will start with Mr. Chris Armstrong, or Ms. Chris Armstrong.
For two, I did. I started attending city councils with things to learn about how local decisions are made. Thank you for your civility and cooperation with each other, the high quality of your questions, and especially your sense of humor. Please, plus, I learned we use community code assign, so cool. Thank you also for passing the sustainability plan. I like knowing I live in a city that thinks about the future. Thank you, City Council President Schubring, for your letter to the editor recognizing there's a disconnect between the city and the people, and inviting us to coffee. I'm going to take you up on that. The rest of my comments are about the disconnect with the regional sports complex. The site, thumbs up, you did the best you could. My questions: Assuming that the city has already decided that being in the business of tournaments is a municipal service it wants to deliver, what kind of oversight will there be for the management company to make sure this is not a drain on limited city resources? Question two: Assuming that every dollar the complex brings in will change hands in town seven times, like the PV reported, how is this different from trickle-down economics, which we already know from history doesn't work? Three: How does the current proposal align with what we residents identified in the Rochester Vision 2050 survey as our top 12 goals? Four: As has been noted, the current proposal is very different from how it was marketed to the voters, and the Community Working Group appears to be made up of people who are already thinking well within the proposal. With due respect to Ben, who I hear is a good guy from the mother of a friend of his, is there a plan for additional broader community engagement to find out whether this project, which benefits a few, really reflects what the majority of the residents want, and the majority of the residents are paying for 70% of this? Five: Do we want to maintain the status quo in terms of benefiting privileged gender and abilities as this current proposal does, or do we want to be visionary in what this can be and how it can benefit a wider swath of our residents within the budget? Because we're not too far down the road yet, we have the opportunity to do this right. Let's engage the city's fabulous imagination, expand community engagement, and be the city that inspires other cities with how it's done.
Thank you. Next up, we have Brian, or Mike O'Brien.
Okay, I actually have some photos with me of evidence of things that I'm going to speak about.
You can hand them to Clerk Casel over there.
So, I'm Mike O'Brien. I'm a resident of Rochester. I live in a disabled building. It's only with disabled people, it's, you know, the Oak Ridge Apartments. I'm what people call a disability advocate, or civil rights person, whatever, but I've been seeing a lot of those Lime scooters blocking sidewalks, a lot. And our friend is in a, uses a walker like that one, and when they block the sidewalk, they can't get through. So, these things are being parked all the time on the sidewalk. And there's geofencing, which I know you guys have it for events, but there should be distinct parking zones for these things and identification, verification with these things, and harsher penalties because it is under your authority, under the ADA and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. So, other cities have been sued for this, for these violations, and I would just rather have this not happen and just have, you know, your contracts that you have with Lime, what is it, Lyft or Uber, whoever it is, just make sure that instead of only doing events, have distinct parking zones for these things. I mean, there should be things where they're not blocking curb ramps, or curb dips, and this has happened on numerous occasions. I have photos all over Rochester on this, on sidewalks where there's a bike lane or other spots where they can be put at.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Next up is Rebecca Ganey-Loss. I probably messed up your last name there.
Yeah. Rebecca Ganaway.
Ganaway.
I live in southeast Rochester, and I spoke last time about the rotting sewer pipes in our neighborhood and surrounding areas. I would first like to start off tonight by saying how greatly disappointed I am that not one city council member reached out to me after I spoke. I believe that, that the disintegrating sewer pipes should be something that everyone should be concerned about. In Rochester, where we have the world-renowned Mayo Clinic, we have raw sewage seeping under our city streets. I live half a mile from Mayo Clinic. As I mentioned last time, the Orangeburg pipe that we have is deteriorating, and many of my neighbors don't even realize that they have this problem, and so they have sewage in their basements. People in my neighborhood can only afford to buy older homes, and we are not told when purchasing these homes that the sewer pipes are 90-plus years old and in the center of the street, nor are we told that it is the homeowner's responsibility to repair any of these major repairs in the middle of the street. We need to get this information out to the people who live in this area, and those who are interested in buying homes here. I'm providing the city council with a few numbers of companies and excavators who can help with this repair in the city of Rochester with this catastrophic repair. I'm also giving you the number to the Olmsted County Housing Development Authority, who can help those in lower incomes with this repair. Unfortunately, I make $420 a month, too much for this to help me. This has been a very time-consuming and frustrating experience, so by giving you these numbers, I hope that you will be able to help my neighbors when they call for advice.
Thank you.
I believe that it is in the best interest of the city council to help the people of southeast Rochester with these repairs so that...
Your time is up, Ms. Galp.
But we don't really deserve to have raw sewage in our streets or in our basements.
Thank you. Next up, we have Barry Skolnick.
Hi, I'm Barry Skolnick. I'm here to talk about the Central Park proposal under reports and recommendations. It's H3. I support the mayor's initiative in this area. Central Park is the oldest park in Rochester, and the surrounding areas had a lot of construction because it's really in the heart of the downtown. And I think that we need to have the HPC deal with it once and for all. It's been there for like eight years or more at this point, and I think it's time that they took a decision on it one way or another. This, really, the proposal that the mayor has is not to tell the HPC what to do. We only request that they consider it as a priority and come back to you to sort of let you know what the action would be, and at that point, you would then determine what the, whether or not it's landmarked or not. But I think it's important, the mayor wants, correctly, I think, wants to put a statue in the park, and I think it's important for people that are considering that and working on that to know whether or not it's going to be a landmark area or not, and I think we need, for the, for the good of the park too, we need to know one way or the other. So I'm just hoping that the council supports that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Skolnick. Next up, we have Barb Hudson.
Hello, my name is Barb Hudson, and I'm here to talk also about Central Park in Rochester, Minnesota. Did you know that it is older than the one in New York City? Probably didn't know that. Did you know that our Central Park is 169 years old? How many cities and properties do you know in Rochester that have had the same function since its inception? Not many, but Rochester Central Park does. It's also currently listed on Rochester's Inventory of Historic Places, previously known as the Potential List. The site was laid out as a public square. Previously, it was a cow pasture in Rochester's original plat in 1856. Due to the generous donation from William D. Lowry, who was a Minnesota lumber baron, Mr. Lowry built the first brick residence in Rochester that was later the home of Dr. Christopher Graham on the Dubuque Trail, and that's near the old Kmart. Since becoming Rochester's first-ever public park in 1856, Central Park has served as a public gathering place for community events like picnics, band concerts, ice cream socials, and featured a central stone fountain and horseshoe pits. It has continued as this type of gathering place for the last 169 years. A ban show was added later in 1879. The park also provided practical amenities like hitching posts and water troughs for horses, and there is still a hitching post in front of Heritage House Museum in Central Park. Various performances and speeches were given in the park, including traveling shows, political speeches, plays, and concerts. During Rochester's 150th anniversary in 2004, there was a department to restore the majesty of Central Park. This project included replacing the fountain, creating a brick plaza, replacing the sidewalks, and improving accessibility for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Central Park boasts a long history of serving Rochester and its community.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. John Creasel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm here to address Central Park. I'm going to modify what I was going to say, which is no surprise to me or to you. I want to ask this basic question. What community would, is waiting for approval to turn our first park into a landmark? I mean, this, this is beyond ludicrous. Want to point out some details about Central Park. Central Park was located there because it was a major thoroughfare for everything that took place in the city of Rochester, and it still does today. Want to point out to you that, that to the north of, to the north of it was our Chicago Northwestern Railroad Station. All military, from the Civil War to the Indian War to World War I to World War II to Korea to, I won't say Vietnam, used that corridor. The Civil War people would march from, that was a gathering place right at Central Park, and then they would, they would march literally up to Fort Smelly. The others used the train. The Train Depot was right there, that unfortunately was taken by West Circle Drive. So, all the activity in the city of Rochester continues to take place on First Avenue. First Avenue has always been the Holy Grail, continues to be the Holy Grail because it connects with Fourth Street and the Dubuque Trail. Now, next to the Train Depot, then, was the Armory, because the Armory also served the Train Depot. 1934, FDR stopped at the, at the Train Depot, gathered with the American Legion, okay, at the, at this park space, and went down First Avenue and gave accolades to Dr. Charlie and Dr. Will.
Thank you, Mr. Creasel.
So, let us not forget. Thank you very much.
That's all I have on the public comment list. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? If not, we will close public comment, and I will move on to Clerk Casel, who will call the roll.
Good evening. Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Council President Schubring.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
Thank you. Next up is our city administrators' report. Administrator Zelmus, take it away.
Thank you, Council President, councilmembers. We always start this off by thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in everything that they do. So, big thank you to everyone who also worked over the 4th of July weekend, appreciate their service, and did want to point out that we are, apparently, my clicker, there we go, we are entering Riverside Music Concert Series season, so that will kick off on Sunday, July 13th, with Blind Melon, and this got a little bit confusing, and a recent newspaper article, not local, Amateur is the name of the opening band, so it is actually the name of a band, it's not just that we don't know. So, I've heard great things about them, but throughout the summer, on the three Sundays in July, and then the first two Sundays in August, there will be free music starting at 7:00 PM at Riverside Park. So, we would encourage anyone to come out and join that event, or that series of events. Also wanted to give a shout out to our partners at the History Center. Thanks to some generous sponsors, the History Center, access to the History Center campus, the Museum, Gallery, and Research Center is free. That started on June 4th and runs through August 30th. They are open Tuesday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, so if that's something folks are interested in, you could try that out and get interested in the History Museum of Olmsted County. Also, we are going to be starting the chip sealing process, so if you are in a neighborhood where you start to see these yellow signs come out, that means you are going to be receiving a chip seal soon. That is weather-dependent, but we do ask you to follow those signs and not park from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, because we do try to go around the city and get that done as swiftly as possible, and try to do that in between rain events. Did want to point out again that there is an open house coming up on July 17th from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Silver Lake Station, so the former Silver Lake Station, it now operates as a park facility, 702 West Silver Lake Drive. There will be discussions and things that you can see and touch and feel for the park improvements that are happening, and also an update on where we're sitting with the improvements for the lake itself. And at the library on July 12th, from 10:30 AM to 12:30 PM, there is going to be free support from Cradle to Career about how to fill out your free application for federal student aid. So, if that's something that you are on your way to looking at, you can head over to the library and learn more about how to do that. And then also, one other note that traffic changes on the intersection of Fourth Street Southwest and the Peace Garden Drive Southwest, and 10th Avenue Southwest are changing, so there will be a change there with always-stop signs being put in. So, if you drive that route regularly, you will have a different experience, so all traffic will be required to stop, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Next up, we have the mayor's report. Mayor Norton, go ahead.
Terrific. I have just a couple updates tonight. Playball is a, had 100 children signed up before noon. In fact, we were closer to 150, so we reopened it, and it is open for, it was open for 300 children, and that took about another half day to get that filled. So, we have 300 young people signed up to spend some time with the Honkers. We were a little disappointed. It happens to be a Twins ballgame, and they were going to come down with some players and a mascot, but it ended up being a day they're traveling away and could not help. So, we do have the Honkers there, we have giveaways for the kids, as well as a half day of learning about baseball. So, it should be pretty exciting. It's at the Honkers Field this Thursday, the tap. July is Parks and Recreation Month. You've probably seen some posts about that. Our Park and Rec Department has been posting in the city. Get out there and enjoy all of our parks. I think a large crowd was enjoying them at the Fourth Fest Celebration this past week, and we've seen great turnout, in fact, bigger than I've ever seen at our Forward concerts. So, that is, having those events in the park is one way to get people to come to and experience a park that maybe they'd not experienced before. So, get out there and enjoy your parks, and if you happen to see one of the employees, give them a thank you. I'm going to share just a little bit about the Rochester Visioning. I've been doing this once a month. This week's topic is justice and law enforcement, and there were four or five themes that came out of the Rochester 2050 report. One was, the first theme, the largest theme in this area, was accountability and fair enforcement. This theme covers concerns about inconsistent enforcement of laws, lack of consequences for repeat offenders, and the perception that some groups are not held accountable, particularly those that are wealthy. Calls for equal justice, greater penalties, and consistent application of law popped up regularly, and I will say, I think there is a lack of understanding of the division between what a city does and what a county does, and a lot of these concerns had to do with sentencing and release of persons, not necessarily the fact that they were caught doing something they shouldn't have. Second, safety and crime prevention. This includes general public safety concerns such as violent crime, property crime, drug trafficking, traffic violations, and road safety. We all hear about that. Many seek a visible active police presence to reduce fear and to reduce crime. That was another one. Third was trust in law enforcement and the justice system. A concern is whether community members trust the police, courts, and public safety officials. Themes included perceived corruption, officer misconduct, lacticul treatment, and the elimination of bias in policing and legal proceedings. Some focus on the impacts of systemic racism and advocate for DEI efforts throughout our whole city structure. Social services, housing, and root causes were another topic under justice. Some believe justice can't be separated from housing, healthcare, mental health, support, and poverty alleviation. These comments stress investment in social safety nets to prevent crime and support vulnerable populations. And the last was alternatives to punitive justice and restorative models. This theme includes support for restorative justice, rehabilitation over incarceration, especially for nonviolent offenders, youth diversion programs, and social reintegration rather than punishment. And I will say, these were identified as issues, but as you can imagine, there were equally positive comments that were, that balanced this out about the police department, and some of the efforts like Safe City Nights were actually mentioned and complimented. So, I have handouts for each of you with these, and you have access, and I have a link on those to the actual comments made by the thousand or so people that commented on these issues, so I want to share that. Women Walk is this coming Saturday from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. If anyone wants to do a little exercise, they can check into this. I will be out walking in the morning from 9:00 to 10:00. I would love some company. We do have a couple openings yet. We filled a lot of positions that you're seeing tonight on the consent agenda. We still have two vacancies for Board of Appeals, and I think the Board of Appeals is a, an interesting one because it does take people who understand rules and regulations, and so I'm hoping there's some industry folks that might be listening, or if any of you at the table know some industry folks who might be interested in being on the Board of Appeals, which means someone may be denied something, and they're going to appeal that request. So, some level of expertise helps, and our staff also train people. So, if you know of anyone, let me know. We do have one opening on Police Policy Oversight Commission, and Sustainability Resiliency have one and potentially two openings. We have one wonderful person who signed up and is not able to get off work because it starts at 4:30, and so she's struggling and may need to resign, and we do have a youth opening, and we have at least one applicant. So, those are the, those are the only ones left to deal with. And then closing, as was covered, and you all know, I was going to, to South Korea to visit our sister city, Seong City. I was there for three whole days. I was on the plane, I think, longer than I was actually on the ground, but it was an absolutely wonderful experience. The folks, this is at City Hall, I'm standing next to Mayor Lim and the council president on, to the other side of me, and then these were the Winona State University students who went as well, and on the far left and right were some of the people that were on their International Affairs Office who I would say babysat me for my time there, provided interpretation, and drove, I had a driver as well, he's not in this picture, that made sure I got to where I needed to be at the same time. And I'll just say, the food was marvelous, the people were wonderful and kind, they have a great interest in Rochester and will be here next year. The thing that I found was my very last thing that I visited before I came home, and it was, they've created a lake out of the ocean, they've created an island out of some grass and dirt, and I will share that with you because it's phenomenally interesting. And they have, they have since opened the lake up to the ocean again, and they use the tide to produce electricity. So, they have tidal energy, and so every day, they, when the tide comes in and out, they get, grab that energy with turbines and store it in batteries. So, it was a fascinating tour, and in addition to that tour, they also had a absolutely phenomenal museum that was really innovative. You know, the walls, if you touched them, things popped out, and it was really phenomenal. They have lots of that stuff over there, they use technology quite a bit. So, phenomenal experience, and I'll be happy to share more as we go, but I'm going to end it on the note that no city funds were used in this trip. That seems to be all over the internet right now, so just want to be really clear. I self-paid for my flight, and our sister city hosted the housing and meals while I was there, again, for three days. So, I hope you all have the experience to meet Mayor Lim when he comes next year. You will enjoy him, and probably an entourage of people that will travel with him. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being a champion. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being a champion for Rochester across the globe. We really appreciate it. With that, we will move on to our order of the agenda. There is one change. We will be combining the public hearings for items G2 and G3 into one public hearing, but we will take a vote for each of those two items. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Spindler-Craig.
If I may, just on item F22 on the consent agenda, I emailed an updated attachment. That license agreement now has a signature by P R E. And there was an Exhibit B that was added, just a, a picture of the affected parking lot space. Contrary to what I told you before, given that we have republished the agenda, you don't need to amend the order of the agenda when you approve it. But also, while I have the floor, I would just add appreciation to P R E entering into this agreement so that we can get this ramp repair work done as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler-Craig. Any other changes to the order of the agenda? Hearing no indication of opposition, the motion passes by unanimous consent. Moving on to our consent agenda, I have received no polled items, is that correct? And I would invite, first, the motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Wall. Is discussion? Councilmember Wall.
Because we go by it very quickly and it's a significant expenditure of money, I would note that F12, the bid came in at $860,000 underneath the engineer's estimate, and I'm thankful to staff and contractors who worked hard to get the best value for our Rochester taxpayers.
Great. Great. Thanks for pointing that out, as you have in the past, Councilmember. We all appreciate it. With that, Clerk Casel, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Councilmember Wall.
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Doring.
Aye.
Council President Schubring.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Council President Schubring, could we get a motion in a second for the order of the agenda?
Oh, we did not do that.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion for the order of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the order of the agenda as presented.
Moved by Councilmember Keen.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to our public hearings, we have two public hearings on our agenda this evening. And before we begin, just a moment to clarify the process for public hearings. First, staff will begin with an introduction or presentation on the item. And then if there is an applicant or representative of the applicant, they will have up to 10 minutes to discuss the item. Then we will open the public hearing. Members of the public have up to five minutes to discuss the, the item. And then we will close the public hearing and invite the applicant back up to rebut or discuss any issues that may have come up during the public hearing. And then after that, we will invite council members to ask questions of staff and the applicant. With that, we will begin with G1, which is a major land subdivision by Farmland LLC to be known as Mercy Hill 3rd. And this will be presented by Mr. Desmond McGill.
Thank you, Council President Schubring. Mayor Norton, members of the council, good evening. This is a major land subdivision for Mercy Hill 3rd, which is the third subdivision for this subject project. It proposes to divide 13.8 acres into 50 residential lots within an R2 zoning district. This is a second recent plat associated with this project. Initially, there was an R1 zone property just to the west that was, was subdivided a few months ago, and this is a follow-up request for the 50 residential lots. That's pretty much all I have on this particular application. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there, is the applicant here or a representative of the applicant? Please step forward, state your name and affiliation, and you have up to 10 minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Council President, members of the council, mayor. My name is Craig Britton. I'm a civil engineer with Widseth, 3777 40th Avenue Northwest Rochester, and I'm here representing Farmland LLC on their major land subdivision application. We have reviewed the conditions that staff has outlined and are in agreement with those, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. We will invite you back up after the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and invite Mr. Widseth back to the podium. Any closing comments?
I have nothing. So I'm just here to answer questions if you have any.
All right. You can, you can sit back down and I'll invite my colleagues, Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. This is likely for staff. I know that there are some known issues of water up there. Does this particular division or subdivision have some of the same problems that the neighborhood has?
When you say water, are you talking about?
Groundwater.
Groundwater. Not that I'm aware of. There is retention facilities associated with this project on the south side. All the stormwater drains down to the south into that existing retention basin. I don't know of any issues. I didn't come across that in my review.
I have one ward member who has, believes that because of some developments around his home, that his groundwater problems have increased and he has renewed that conversation within the past couple of days. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the major land subdivision number CD 2025-020 plat by Farmland LLC to be known as Mercy Hill 3rd with two conditions for the subdivision of 13.8 acres into 50 residential lots.
Moved by Councilmember Keen, second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. Councilmember Keen, any more to add? Clerk Casel, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Councilmember Wall.
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Doring.
Aye.
Council President Schubring.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Moving on to items G2 and G3, which is a major land subdivision by Lennar to be known as Pebble Creek 6, and an interim, interim use permit on the same property to allow for substantial land alterations. Mr. McGill.
Thank you again, Council President Schubring. This is a request for a major land subdivision of, the subdivision of 454 single-family residential lots and the interim use permit for the substantial land alteration for this 185-acre subdivision. The subject site is located north of Barron's Road and west of 60th Avenue Northwest and south of 55th Avenue Northwest. It is all zoned R2. Pebble Creek Development was initially approved under a special zoning district and general development plan in 2003. There have been five previous subdivisions built within Pebble Creek under the current GDP. The applicant, Lennar Homes, is purchasing the balance of the Pebble Creek site from the current landowner. In 2003, an environmental workshop, environmental worksheet was approved for the east portion of this site. And the west portion is being currently worked on for an additional environmental assessment worksheet that will be submitted here shortly for the west side of the project. On June 2nd, the city council approved the annexation of the remaining 326 acres of the project site outside of the first five phases of the project. That was approved on this, by the state of Minnesota, July 2nd. Lennar has worked on amending the general development plan for Pebble Creek, which has been proved in concept. A new traffic study is required and has been submitted for the GDP amendment, and it is under review by Public Works. Public Works approval of the study of the GDP amendment will allow the GDP to become approved. And the subdivision encompasses lots with that range from 45 feet wide to 75 feet wide. Also included with this request is a substantial land alteration, I U P, for the movement of 844,000 cubic yards, the movement of dirt that would include cut and fill. And the site generally balances out, though there is going to be some fill brought in. The increase will be up to 25 feet in some areas and a cut would be in the amount of about 25 feet in some areas. And that concludes my introduction for this application. I'd be happy to answer questions of the council.
With that, is the applicant here or a representative of the applicant? Please step forward, identify yourself, and you have up to 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Steve Trosky with Lennar, seeking your approval for our first ground-up project in Rochester. Lennar is Minnesota's largest home builder, and believe it or not, at full build-out. This will be our largest community we've ever built in the state of Minnesota. So we're pretty excited to be here. We know you've got a great need for diverse housing styles, so we've thoughtfully designed the next addition of Pebble Creek to encompass all of your needs throughout your life, from town homes to single-family homes to single-level living for retirees and empty nesters. And after Ryan from WSE Engineers comes up here, I'm happy to stand for any questions. Just want to say thank you for your consideration on this project. It's really important to us. I know it's important to the city and we're really looking forward to get started.
Welcome.
Thanks. Thanks, Steve. I just want to highlight a few of the.
Can you identify yourself first?
Yes. My name is Ryan Schoenfelder with WSE Engineering. We're the engineering consultants for Lennar. Just wanted to cover a few of the highlights on this project and the site that's developing for over 20 years under the DeWitts family. The intensity of the development's consistent with the general development plan that was approved before. We've updated the traffic study, wetland delineation, those have all been submitted and under review by staff. We're finalizing the grading plan. We've completed and submitted a stormwater proof of concept. And as Steve mentioned, this is a, provides a diversity of housing that Rochester needs. These are for sale homes, including, you know, smaller lots and also larger lots for different home buyers. I'm available for any questions that may be technical that you guys have.
Great. Thank you. With that, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and invite our applicants back up for any closing statements.
Again, Ryan, I just want to mention that we're acceptable to the seven conditions and understand what we need to do to get this project done. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? I have a question to begin with, and it has to do with the, the major land alteration. It, I just want, I want to have a sense of the scope of that. I, I believe it's 159 acres and we're moving 700,000 cubic yards of dirt. What is that as far as the scale for a, a piece of land that size? Is this really a major, major land alteration or is this? Does that make sense?
Yes, I think I'll take that one, Council President Schubring. So looking at some other sites on the north side of town, we took a look at Dakota Middle School, and that's one of the largest grading projects that we've seen on a site in recent history. That was roughly a 40-acre site and it had grade swings of 23 to 28 feet on the site, and the imported fill on that site was 236,000 yards. So scaling that up, if we made Dakota Middle School the same size as the proposal in front of you, that would be 938,000 yards of grading, so kind of on a comparable scale to what happened on the Dakota site, just, just a larger site is what we're dealing with.
Thank you. And so with the, because we are moving more than, what is it, 10 cubic acres, we have to get an I U P? Is, who, is that a state?
That, that's just covered under the UDC. It's a requirement of the.
It's, it's here.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, question for community development. I noticed that the general development plan was approved in October of 2003, so that leaves a large gap and many things have changed. Can you just point out to us before we deal with this, like what kinds of risks come with those sort of 22 years of changing laws? Or is this thing, is that all, that we should just look away and what was planned, approved back in 2003, it really isn't relevant to what's in front of us?
Sure. As far as what we should be concerned about, I think one of the things, one of the important things is the traffic generation associated with the project. It is much less than what was initially proposed in 20, or 2003. They're talking about, about half the number of units for this project overall as the 2003 plan, although there has been increase of traffic in the area just from surrounding development happening. But that's the, hence the reason for, the need for the additional traffic study before we approve that general development plan is there have been some changes. There was an environmental worksheet done. Again, we're looking at less density than, than what was previously approved. So there really hasn't been any changes in the environmental conditions to, to our knowledge. And I, I think one of the nice things about this is, you know, we have things such as the connectivity requirements now that ensures that if you look through that development, you'll see that there's a lot of connections throughout the entire thing to their centralized or their meandering open space that cuts through the development and through, you know, next to the, to the dry creek beds. So I, I think they're, the project, it's, it's, it's good that we're relooking at this, I think, and that the developer is as well, I mean, looking at this project, so.
Okay. The one that comes to mind for me is that I believe the original general development plan was done as like a special consideration, but I think we converted those things zoning-wise when we did the UDC, and this project all fits into the existing zoning.
It does. It all fits within the R2 zoning district. You're right, there was a number of different zoning districts in the special development plan and, you know, one of them being, you know, there was like intended to be a mixed-use center at the corner of 55th and 60th. The applicant is looking to move forward with, with housing in that area now in the future, so. But, but it still fits within the existing zoning of that, of that area and the subdivision before you tonight, all fits within the R2 zoning district.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. I was at the Neighborhood Information Meeting, which was both very spirited and positive with people asking good questions about what this would mean for their larger neighborhood. At that Neighborhood Information Meeting, we talked about far more than the 454 residential lots, the number like 976 sticks in my mind for the larger build-out to which Mr. Trosky referred earlier. Would you care to make commentary on that?
Steve Trosky with Lennar. Good memory, yes. So there are some environmental studies that are required by the state of Minnesota for projects of this size. It's called an environmental assessment worksheet. So everything on the east.
worksheet on file, which means, under state law, we can proceed with that area like we're doing now. Everything to the west of that ditch creek area, we are preparing a new environmental assessment worksheet under state law, and that'll come before you at a later date. And so the 950 to 1,000 home sites is the total build-out when the entire community is constructed. So right now, we are only moving forward on the area that has been environmentally approved by the state of Minnesota.
Thank you. Mr. Trosky, I have one more question. I'm going to go back to the major land alteration. Could you speak to what the site will look like as far as the topography? I mean, you're, you're moving a lot of dirt. Is it going to be flat, or is there going to be some grade there in that subdivision?
It is a lot of dirt. Thank you for the question. I would have to defer for some of the more technical answers to the engineering team on this, but it was referenced that a similar project of a middle school had a comparable amount of dirt. A school is, is one level, so you need to have it flat. The positive thing about developing a residential community is that you could step the homes down the street, so you're able to capture a lot of that grade. So to answer the question, it's going to have a lot of grade flowing. We need to have all the rainwater go into the basins, so it will be a significant topographic change from what's out there now, but it's not going to have, you know, the large cliffs and the big valley. I know those aren't the right terms in Rochester, but it's essentially going to be all smoothed out with just slight undulations in the terrain, and we're able to build the homes going up and down those roads.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I think Councilmember Palmer kind of had his hand up first.
I'll make a motion to approve adopting a resolution approving major land subdivision, number CD 2025-022 plat by Lennar to be known as Pebble Creek 6, with seven conditions for the subdivision of 185 acres into 454 residential lots and 12 outlots.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Palmer and seconded by Councilmember Keane. Councilmember Palmer, any more to add?
No.
Councilmember Keane?
Yeah, I'll just say that it's a kind of, really kind of great to see this sort of approvals going forward with this large units. When you look at our housing starts over the last couple of years, we have not been able to do it. Now, these aren't housing starts or permits, but I think you can see that by having more of a statewide builder here, it does seem to help us get started or get a better run rate on getting housing built over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
I believe that the statistics that Jim Minor sends to all of us indicates that Lennar is the largest builder in 2025 for Rochester, so we're thankful for that. I echo what Councilmember Keane has said. I know two Lennar communities in the Twin Cities really very well and have in unauthorized fashion walked through probably 30 or 40 of their homes under construction. I'm excited, while I'm very happy for our local builders, very happy to have Lennar coming to town and offering very large numbers for us to meet our goals.
Thank you. I will join the choir there and thank Mr. Trosky and Lennar for coming to Rochester. I think it makes all of us better to see a major developer down here with our local developers. It's a sign of things to come. So I will be supporting this. However, I do really encourage staff and the city to really look at sustainable land development and, and projects and what we can do to, to limit the number of clear cuts and, and really work with our topography and, and the ecosystem that we have down here. So with that, Clerk Queso, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keane?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Doring?
Aye.
Council President Schubring?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Moving on to reports and recommendations. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Moving on to the, the one that I had concerns with, the interim use permit on, to allow substantial land alteration. Is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Palmer?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Keane. Councilmember Palmer?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For staff, we've used two terms that I didn't know we could use. One is ditch and one is creek. Is this a ditch or a creek? I would call it a swell, actually. I understand what a swell is, and I agree with you, so thank you.
It's just a natural water course that's intermittent.
Perfect. That answered my question.
Any further discussion? Clerk Queso, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keane?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Doring?
Aye.
Council President Schubring?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to reports and recommendations, our first item is the Rochester Sports and Recreation Complex schematic design, and we have Mr. Ben Bolt and team here.
Thank you, Council President and Councilmembers and Mayor for having us this evening. Ben Bolt, Rochester Parks and Rec. And I have Jenna Bowman here with me as well. She'll be chatting a bit about the community working group. That was part of the efforts that we've been working on over the last few months since the last time we were here. So the slide I wanted to start with this evening was just that timeline slide again showing where we've, where we've come along with this project and where we're headed to. We've been working over the last few months to continue the design process after the approval for the land purchase so that we could get specific with the, the design to that site and developing that further. Also, taking an opportunity to have a period of community engagement through a community working group. Again, that Jenna will share some more details on. And now, coming this evening to talk about the schematic design, where it's at now, along with that came a cost estimate, again, from our construction manager at risk, Knutson, to help us make sure that we're staying within the budget for what we're attempting to do here with Phase 1, and we'll get into that a little bit later in the presentation, but for now, I'll turn it over to Jenna.
Good evening. As Ben said, here to talk about the community engagement portion that we completed recently. So as you likely saw within the council packet, we had the opportunity to pull together a group of around 14 community members that made up the working group. There were three different meetings over the course of May, or March, April, and concluded in, in May. Those individuals are noted on the screen and within your packet.
Clerk Queso, could you move the captions to the, yep, there we go.
Wonderful. And really, the, the conversations over the course of the three meetings evolved in terms of the, the design. As you see within the memo, the very direct way that the community members gave feedback to the design team and how that feedback was used, anything from the layout to the various amenities, to the maybe specific type of amenities, where we're talking shade structures and whatnot, really to try to optimize the overall design for the use of the tournament type of uses as well as the overall community use. You know, this is, I'm always very appreciative when we have this opportunity to engage community members in this working group process. You may recall, we did something similar for Soldier's Field Aquatics, and when you have the number of diverse perspectives in a room and there's an opportunity to come together and really good conversations around those perspectives and the outcome that we had, it's always a pretty neat thing because you're seeing, you know, that community really come together. As noted, there's a variety of different things that came through through that process related to the fields, the pickleball courts, the basketball court, the soccer fields, the playground, the gathering space, and I think would be short-sighted not to omit that through all of this, both the understanding of the outdoor portion of the complex first, but really liking and desiring to see the overall complex, complex completed and that, including the indoor portions. Again, would note that we had a variety of folks who participated, whether they have direct knowledge in things like baseball and baseball tournaments, to pickleball, to our age-friendly advocates and to youth, as well as our accessibility advocates, thinking about our trail, our trail connectivity as it relates to Willow Creek. Again, really great conversations over the course of those three meetings, but I think also, as we know, it's not just within those meetings, but the conversations that happen outside of those meetings with their fellow community members and how that feedback was brought back to the design team, how that was utilized as we moved from meeting to meeting. So again, would just say that it was a very effective working group process, appreciated all the perspectives, even at time of differing, differing opinion, as you saw with the memo too, the ability to come together in a very respectful way and have those discussions and conversations. So I will defer back to Ben, but happy to answer any questions as it relates to the working group process.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna. So wanted to provide kind of an update on where we're at with the, the project so far and with schematic design in addition to that cost estimate. So again, our overall project budget, $65 million at this stage of design, which is about 30% design. We are very close to that budget number, and we'll talk a little bit more about how we stay on budget as we potentially get into the bidding process there. The, the scope of the work that's been designed and what we've gotten cost estimates on include the prep work needed for that indoor facility to come with a future phase, also includes some prep work for the commercial lots along the south of the property there, and we feel like that's an opportunity to, again, master plan and develop that whole site and have those south lots be something that in the future can help us both to sell those sites or decide what we want to do with those sites in the future to complement what's going to happen at the sports complex. We anticipate that when we put the packages together, we'll include alternates there, again, some different levers that we can pull to make sure that we stay on budget, trying to deliver on that tournament caliber, regional league significant and community asset-type facility that we envision here, but do that within the budget. The other thing we've been doing, along with our operating partner through the planning process, has been developing that pro forma to see what our operating budget will look like based on the number of fields and pickleball courts and the other amenities within the site and how we can make that work financially to be operating at a, at a neutral or positive way year over year as the complex opens. And with what we have within the schematic design, the estimates that we have in that pro forma or operating budget are looking like we would be successful with that goal. So again, that schematic design level, a similar list of amenities here to what you've seen before, eight artificial turf baseball fields that would be full-size baseball fields and would have the temporary fencing in the outfield in order to bring them down to a smaller-sized baseball field or a softball field, rectangular fields used for soccer, lacrosse, those types of sports, two of those fields, 12 pickleball courts, central building, which you can see there in between the two clovers of ball fields, that would be our tournament check-in area, restrooms, concessions, gathering space, place that community members could spend time on an evening if they have a family member or friend out participating in an event, or also would be very busy during a tournament weekend with that central gathering space. And that area would also include playground, kind of patio space there when you've been to have concessions and be connected with a trail system that would get you to the fields you were looking to get to, back to the parking lot, try to make it accessible and easy to navigate around the site. We would also have, you can see the trail system kind of going, circulating around the exterior of the site as well as through the, the midst of the site there, creating, again, that opportunity for family members or friends who are there while they have another person participating in the event, or just be able to travel through that site along the Willow Creek Trail that'll connect from the north through the site to the south at Game Haven Park. Again, and then you can see, one thing I had a question on earlier in the weekend was that space that's labeled playfield right now, it's between the north and south parking lots, that is the site where the future indoor facility would be. As it is in this phase, that would just be a, a green space, a, a natural grass field space there until the time came that we were able to develop that into the indoor facility. You can see the pickleball courts and, and basketball court there adjacent to the north parking lot as well, kind of laying out the full site. And then you can see the outlines of the commercial lots there to the south on the, on the schematic design there to the south of that 45th Street, southeast labeled road there. I think those are the points I wanted to make on that slide. And then, again, just getting back into that, how will, the, the strategy to stay on budget as we get into the, putting the construction documents together and bidding packages, things such as the number of batting cages per field, the, the potential to look at, do we put natural turf or artificial turf on the rectangular fields, the ball field quad buildings? Those would be the smaller restroom buildings that would be within each clover or quad of ball fields, and we could bid those as alternates, as well as that south commercial lot, do we make those pad-ready where we're bringing utilities to the site and doing the grading to potentially increase opportunity for the resale later, but do we include that within this initial package? And we can have that listed as an alternate. Several things we've been looking at over the last few weeks since we received the schematic design and the cost estimates, things that we can, that we've already done some of these things and others that we're continuing to look at to, to, again, stay within the budget there would be number of restroom fixtures, really contemplating how many patrons are going to be there on a tournament weekend, how many patrons and users would be there on a weeknight, what is the right number of fixtures, and there's a few different ways to factor that, always making sure we're within what the code requirements are, but trying to figure out what the kind of padding on those number of fixtures would be. So that's one thing we're looking at, converting some of the concrete pathways to asphalt, just a lower-cost product there to use and, and getting the right mix there, again, wanting to create a very accessible site, but trying to do it in a cost-effective way. Consolidating, at one point, we had concessions a little more spread out between the three buildings, the central building and the two quad buildings. Since then, we've consolidated just to the central building to have concessions for a couple of reasons. One, it lowers the cost on when it comes to equipment, but also makes it a little bit easier for a concessionaire to be able to provide concessions and prepare food and all that in one location versus moving it around throughout the site and having it available. So, and there's some other items there that we've also been looking at as kind of value engineering over the last few weeks to, to make sure that we are able to, to be in a good position when we go out to bid and, and be within budget. So that is the end of my slides and happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Councilmember Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Bolt. Beyond the obvious benefits brought to Rochester on the weekends with tournaments coming in, using our resources, our hotels, paying taxes, restaurants, going to our other recreational facilities, shopping in our places, beyond that, can you remind us how this sports complex will benefit our community?
Yes. I think there are several ways that it will benefit our community. One, in addition to all the items you just mentioned about having those visitors coming to Rochester and participating in events, we also plan for the weekdays to be primarily local community users will be out there for games or practices or just enjoying the trails, playgrounds, other things during the day when it's not hosting a tournament on the weekend. So, and several of the amenities will be there and available all the time, the, the trail system throughout-- system throughout the playground, basketball court, those type of amenities will be things that community members can use, they'll they'll always be open in addition to the the rentable spaces of the the sports fields and pickleball courts. So yeah, we feel like there'll really be a complimentary use there between local usage as well as the tournament usage.
Thank you. Administrator Zombs, go ahead.
Council President, Councilmember, if I could just add, one of the things that we're also looking at is the operating model being significantly different than the existing sports facilities that we have in town. And so Mr. Bolt touched on this, but being able to have those weekend tournaments also, we are hopeful will allow, and the pro forma suggests that that we will be able to operate in such a way that there's an ability to have some of those weekday experiences be different than what people experience now, more access, not being operated by a specific club sport potentially being utilized, but we 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 haven't had that model in probably forty years in Rochester. And so this presents a different opportunity for people, for us to be able to have programming there, potentially low or very, you know, or scholarship opportunities for summer programming camps, et cetera, as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Could you tell us a little bit more about the pro forma? Because I I'm hearing, you know, neutral or positive in year one, but what are some of the assumptions? How many tournaments need to be booked for that to even start to be neutral?
Yeah, so we are planning for somewhere in the sixteen to eighteen weekends of tournaments that would be run two to three day, mostly three day to Friday, Saturday, Sunday type tournaments would be part of that. We'd be renting the ball fields on evenings for practices and games, as well as renting the soccer fields for practices and games there as well. There also would be a a daily charge for the the pickleball courts. So a a person would have an opportunity either through a like a day guest pass, similar to what we do at Kuzky Park when it comes to those tennis courts, or they could have a a monthly or season type of membership that would get them access there to the pickleball courts. And another option we're looking at would also be the ability to reserve a court for a period of time to bring in a group of people to be able to play pickleball together.
And I guess as a follow up, when was the pro forma developed and how has it been updated since we would have heard about this move to outdoor in the February meeting?
Yep, so the pro forma was developed in October, November of twenty twenty four initially to to look at both the outdoor and indoor components and updated, tweaked over the course of those few months until we came to the council with the information in February. Since then, we've had additional conversations with that operator, with our local sports groups to talk about usage. We've done more market study on what tournaments are out there, what tournaments we can host here, what tournaments we can expand that already exist in Rochester that we can utilize multiple ball field locations. And so the most recent pro forma I received was about two weeks ago from that operator. Again, continuing to refine where we're at with what our estimates would be.
And is there a sensitivity that's been done on this? I mean, we heard in February that the reason for moving away from an indoor phase one was that it would require tax levy support. How much confidence can we have that this pro forma ends up neutral?
It's a great question. It's hard to look into the future and feel super confident about it, but I would say, again, through looking at what tournaments in the region, as close as like Wisconsin Dells area into Wisconsin down into Iowa, what they're doing, even to the point of what their admission fees are, what their team registration fees are, talking to their concessionaires about how they're doing, I mean, we're trying to get very granular with developing that pro forma, and we've been working hard on that over the last several months now. And I would say our confidence is growing that we feel that pro forma is pretty solid.
Councilmember Doring.
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm thinking about the questions that I get about constituents and and it has to do with the pro forma as well. And I'm wondering when the pro forma will become more public information rather than numbers that are or or the vagueness that are presented is presented at at council meetings like this. You know, the skepticism that I hear from constituents about this regional sports complex being built for the benefit of sports tourism rather than a actual community benefit is pretty high at this point. I would say about seventy five percent of the the folks who reach out to me are wondering how they as a a community member of Rochester, who's not playing, who's not paying to play in a highly competitive sports league, will have access to a regional sports center, can utilize the facility, is 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 overwhelming my inbox at this time. And I I think it's a compelling argument to to show that the performer shows that that terminate, terminate, terminate level play, books sixteen weekends out of a year, even though those might be the prime weekends of the year, that everyone wants to be out playing baseball, might be able to fund the complex. I think there's a compelling argument there that it will make it a cost neutral endeavor or or will not take more money out of taxpayers' pockets. But it's hard to to kind of make that argument to folks without having facts and figures at hand. So I'm wondering when we can see the pro forma as 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 the city council, so we are equipped to have those conversations in a more meaningful manner.
Who's going to take that one?
I'm gonna find a friend. Look, I will answer. So we will have this in front of you, I believe, two more times, and we can make sure to bring that, we can provide it. I think the key that we would want to share is that there we're continuing to update that. We also need to be bringing you an operating model, and that's part of what we've been doing. But I would say, even in February, when we were talking about this, it was very clear that in order to make the financial mix work, you really needed the outside, otherwise there were significant costs and we did provide that. That doesn't change unless you are able to provide the positive, the neutral or positive exterior components. So we can probably send that out to you tonight. It's just that we would want to have the caveat that it we are continuing to make sure that if we think something needs to be updated or if something changes, for example, on the how we're going to build something, it might tweak something ten thousand dollars, but that's how granular we're getting at being able to adjust the pro forma. I would also say that the operator at risk that we've been working with operates this type of facility and provides community use time, programming and summer camps and other places that they both operate and own facilities. So I I feel fairly confident that what they're really looking at is a model that includes that public use, yes, it's for baseball, softball, different ages, et cetera, as in addition to pickleball, which we are, we don't have that much pickleball here in comparison to many other places. And again, having a different manner that we operate this facility is very different than what people experience at most of our facilities in Rochester because gratefully, we partner with different groups. But again, so we can provide that, I just would provide the caveat that we're always continuing to update it to make sure that it is literally as accurate as possible down to the minute. And when we come back with the operator model, that will include an agreement that may have some requirements for them to be able, similar to the civic center operation, for them to be able to meet those goals.
So just to clarify, Administrator Zombs, so the next time we're going to see this is with the operator model, is that correct?
I don't believe the operator model will be next. You will have the, you'll need to, just like every project, you would have the approval to bid and then the award of bid. And at some point between now and then, we need to finalize the operating model, but we have to build it in order to operate it. So there's, I can't, I don't know that the next time you you see this item will be that, but you will see it at least two more times.
So I guess where I'm going is because this issue really has a lot of public sentiment to it, if there is the possibility to have a a study session, agenda item in connection with the pro forma to really kind of flesh that out and then, as opposed to hearing the item and voting that evening?
I believe that based on the changes that we made to our calendar, you, we had been planning to try to have a study session, but we changed the calendar for August. And so with the timing of moving this forward and being able to get to construction, the next time that we were planning to be here was on reports and recommendations, but we can certainly provide a more robust presentation. Unless we want to try to schedule a meeting, but there was a lot of challenges in August with trying to get the city council together. So in order to continue to move forward with the timeline and costs escalate every single month, as you often see in your packet, that would.
When are the bid packages expected to be voted on?
We're looking to bring those back in September for authorization to bid, and then there'd be the period of time to do that.
Okay, Councilmember Doring.
Yeah, just for for sake of easeness with this awkwardness of being online, I'm going to ask a couple more questions and then just not talk again for a little while.
Go for it.
It's a huge delay for me, and I'm sure that there's a day delay for you as well. I have a question about the schematic design itself. The footprint for maybe the proposed indoor design, and I know I'm going way down the thing, looks relatively small. Is that just a placeholder? Because again, I've heard overwhelmingly from community members about expectations of design one, design, you know, phase one, phase two, really looking for a more robust indoor space. Could you alleviate some of that concerns that that's simply a placeholder and not really the actual footprint size of a indoor space at that facility?
Okay. Yeah, happy to answer that question. So the indoor space that's footprinted onto the schematic design, about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet is what's estimated there. And it covers that ball field up to a little bit of that north parking lot, so it gets pretty close to those pickleball courts to the north.
Right. I'm just, I'm going back to the to look at the slide in my slide deck, which is different, a different process than looking at the slide deck that everyone else is seeing. It's the same same slide deck. I see that. So looking at the, just looking at that schematic, it looks like it's the size of all the pickleball, pickleball courts combined, correct?
It it would be larger than that. It it's that, it's the kind of black dashed line, it's not a
Oh, I see.
Perfect rectangle, but it it expands all the way over to about the N or the D of the end of playgrounds and then goes all the way to the east, to the to the landscaping where the road, you know, would go north and south.
Are you, Councilmember Wall, are you clarifying? Yeah, would it would it be fair to say, just just comparing, it's a little bit bigger than an entire baseball field?
Getting close to the size of a full sized baseball field, yes.
So it's a hundred and twenty eight thousand square feet capacity. Councilmember Doring still has the floor, go ahead.
Yeah, I I really appreciate that clarification on the small map version that I'm looking at my computer screen. It was really hard to see that dotted line. All I could see was the green playfield, and that caused me a little bit of concern that that's the footprint of the actual indoor space. The last question I received via email today, and I think that our public speaker, Ms. Armstrong, brought it up earlier this morning, is how were the the people on the advisory committee picked? Were were was that put out to the public for people to offer their expertise or were, did you go out and recruit people for that advisory board for this project?
Be happy to take that. Thank you, Councilmember. So we worked with local organizations to identify individuals within these categories. So whether it be Rochester baseball or our accessibility community, the youth that were participated, communication was provided to all all three public high school activities directors. So again, worked with our connections through community organizations. And I think as you have seen through the timeline as well, building on a variety of public engagement that has included another working group, various surveys and other conversations. But to directly answer the question, no, there was not a direct call put out to the community, but we did work with our community partners to try to identify diverse group of representatives. Also, as you see within the chart, trying to not only have sports representation, but representation across the community in a variety of facets.
Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have right now.
Any further discussion, Councilmembers? Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I've got just a couple of questions. Looking at the eight ball fields, it appears to be they're all the same. Is there a concept of court one or the main field finals games? Is there any build out of like bleachers or anything in one place, or is it all uniform?
Thank you for the question. So there are a couple ways they'll be differentiated. The four fields to the south, so on your rendering, they're shown with having green infields. Those fields are slightly larger in size, those would be fit the requirements right now for NCAA or collegiate baseball. And the field that is on the, I really should have, does this have a pointer on it? It does, it does. Okay, so this one right here, the northeast of that quad, that would be our championship field. Some reason for that with with the topography of the site, it makes for kind of some cool knolls where you can sit on and watch the games from the outfield, also works well with the way the sun sets and those types of things, so it'd be a good field for that. And that field would have some upgraded seating, not not necessarily a stadium, but more bucket seats versus a bleacher seat or things like that. That was one of the points of feedback from the community working group was the types of seating, how accessible it is, where it's located, is there shade nearby or over top of the seating? So those are all things that are were added into design. So yes, looking to have shade, looking, kind of your five high aluminum bleachers are generally the least accessible of all the types. So how can we get seating that would be more comfortable for folks in that field especially would have more of the bucket style seating and more comfortable seating for a championship game?
Okay, so the other fields, but they do have that, I mean, there is seating features, it's just expected to be lawn chairs sort of?
No, there will be seating for each field. From the feedback we got from other tournament organizers, those who are part of the working group, there is some utilization of existing seating, a lot of people will want to bring in their own seats. So we set up places that are part of the paved spaces where they can easily set up their lawn chairs or pop up tents if they bring those types of things like a a tournament family or spectator or team often does. So it'll be a mixture of both existing seating as well as spaces where people can set up their own seats.
Okay, when I look at this plan and think of the, you know, the the started out with this idea of like this tournament central and this like economic development investment, it seems to me that we settled on baseball for that. And the other amenities here are much more community or less tournament and more like the the soccer fields, probably isn't enough here really to be like a tournament central.
I would say the one caveat to that would be twelve pickleball courts all in one spot with the caliber of court development there, we feel like that'll be a definitely a tournament site for us for pickleball and and the local pickleball folks that we've talked to feel it would be a good site for that also. But yes, the ball field, whether it's baseball or softball, is is more of the anchor when it comes to the tournament traffic.
Can I just, as far as that, I I really like the idea of the turf mainly because I think of the troubles we have here in the spring baseball season and even fall type of things. So I like that, but I also have the side, the other side of it, that there's concerns specifically with soccer more than baseball with with the turf. Is there a concept of, we're going to have a sort of turf that's gets watered and gets changed, it is maintained such that there's not the burns and things like that, or that's not a consideration, that's more of an operational consideration?
Well, that's one of the reasons why we put an alternate to be, do we do artificial turf or natural turf on the soccer fields? For example, one thing we want to continue to evaluate is what is the best surface there. But as far as being a bit more weatherproof, the artificial turf is more weatherproof. The artificial turf manufacturers and companies that I've talked to over the course of these couple of years of this project existing, they they talk about the advances that are being made in turf, the different qualities and characteristics that different types of turf have. We would be looking to have, you know, the the right styles of Um, we would be looking to have, um, you know, the, the right styles of turf installed here. So it, it would be different between the soc, the soccer field would be one style of turf compared to the ball field would be another style to try to, to use the best product we can when it comes to artificial turf on the, on the fields.
Go ahead.
Councilmember, I think the other um piece to that as well as, um, I mean, to note that a differentiator in this be at the, the baseball, softball fields, the pickleball courts and the soccer fields is the lighting. And I would say that was something that came through strong with the working group that when they heard that lighting was included um in uh the project in these various areas, that was definitely seen as a positive. So to what you're also articulating, both with the spring and into the fall.
Yep.
Um, you know, as you indicated, like with the soccer fields, we're, we're limited in what we have for turf, turf options compared to our surrounding neighbors and into the metro. Um, but then especially adding in the light, both for uh baseball, softball, soccer, and then the pickleball was a very big um deal for the working group members and felt like in their conversations, that was um, you know, a feature of the complex that was appealing, given the added hours in the day that that would allow for throughout the course of our seasons.
Very good, thank you. My, my last thing, and just listening to my, my peers' questions about the combination of the indoor, the future space, and also the idea of like what the operating model is. Going back to February, my memory is that one of the reasons we went this way is this is the best chance for the best operating uh uh model we can have. And the idea of the risk of building indoor and having a much higher um uh carrying costs and things like that, that's one of the, the main reasons we ended up where we're at. Is that, did I understand that right, or is that something that I, I over, overinterpreted?
No, Councilmember, that's, that is the information we shared, and we still um believe that to be true when we've compared the two pro formas, the indoor, um, indoor only versus outdoor um only to start with in phase one. The pro forma was uh, was better with the outdoor focus.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
So if I'm remembering correctly, were the members of the Soldier's Field uh pool working group invited to address council? Were there two, uh, a preferred and an alternate plan?
Could you clarify that?
I, I guess I'm, I'm just noting that we don't have any members of the working group who have been invited to address us. And I, uh, you know, we get a summary report. I, I would like, and we're moving more into discussion, would have loved to hear some positive support from the folks who were engaged here.
Understood. We have um been keeping them up to date and aware um throughout the process. But if that is kind of looking to city administrators' homes, but as far as any particular participation, I guess I was welcoming a baby about the time we were finishing the working group of the, with the Soldier's Field Aquatics, but um maybe somebody can jog my memory of the exact participation or there's specific clarity you're looking for with.
I guess what I remember from the Soldier's Field was that group members were invited to address council if they would like in a similar format to this, of just sharing about their experience and what they were, you know, grateful for of having participated and what changed. And, and I guess, again, I don't really have a question, but just a note that I, I don't feel that from folks who are involved here. I appreciate the staff report on it. Um, but it is striking to me that we're not hearing from community members who said, this is how I feel like my group that I'm representing is reflected in this plan. Which makes me go back to the concern about the operating model and the trust with the community and how we're navigating that space between trust and revenue positive. Or in line with community and these operating model.
Yeah, I mean, I can say we really tried to uh summarize the feedback from the group throughout the various um steps of the process, you know, going back through emails that were provided to the design team uh between the course of the meetings, capturing the feedback that was provided in the meetings, including maybe where there's difference of opinion. Um, I think if there's feedback about the process and ways that we can standardize, especially how you as the council are hearing from those participants, that's welcome feedback. I think we know, you know, whether it be through um exact community co-design or various forms of it, that it's always um growing, evolving, and that, that's feedback that we can take within the process. So if that's, you know, a place that we can get clarity from the council as to how exactly you might like to see more consistency with that participation, including their direct interaction with you through more of a formal process like the meeting, um, we would welcome that, welcome that feedback.
And I, I guess my other question is, you know, recognizing that we have four new council members coming in to this process very early in the year. I think this was our first meeting of the second month. We've gone through the strategic priority setting, and we've adopted both foundational principle and a strategic priority that include community feedback, inclusive growth management, inclusive decision-making. And I guess my question above this is how do we square these two processes? One that was already in place and one that we are talking about with the budget? How do we square these together and, and rebuild some trust here with the community about this project?
I'll take that one as well.
Uh, administrators' homes, go ahead.
Council President, Councilmember. I think like any project that has been ongoing for four-plus years, it's continuously repeating accurate information, which I appreciate the questions that were asked today. It's very hard to, like, not everyone is paying attention to the four years of everything that has happened and transpired. For example, all the way back to when we were first at the legislature, this was only supposed to be an outdoor facility, and that's what we priced. So we went through the process to try to get more community feedback, and the feedback was that their appetite was bigger than the budget. And so um I, I do think it's really important to continuously repeat accurate information, which doesn't mean it's not going to feel still strange to a person who maybe envisioned something different when they were either voting or hearing the information, um, or getting information, you know, and everybody got direct information. Nobody, almost nobody gets direct information from source anymore. If you look at the statistics, they're reading Facebook, they're not actually going to the news source, which is concerning. Um, but it's just a, that's just how people are getting their information across the world these days. And so I think it is important to continue to provide that information. We'd be happy to have the work group as part of something, but again, we were trying to navigate uh the ability to have the meetings and use your schedule and keep moving the process forward and the timeline that we had talked about in February. Um, so I would say continuing to provide that information, we can, for example, provide the pro forma, again, important to have the caveat that it will continue to change, just like any budget, um, because we want to get it as accurate as possible. And then going through um with the operating model, we have to go through a process in order to get to a point to be able to even have a glide path to present that to the city council or the community. Um, and, and so what people would really like to see happen also isn't always in alignment with the other thing that we generally hear, which is we don't want our taxes to go up. So um, it's challenging. I, I don't have a perfect answer for you. This is the art part of public policy and not the science part of public policy. It's just continuing to repeat the why. And so I think all of you have done that very well this evening through your questions and through your statements and, I'm sorry, we were only on questions, your, your statements that were asked as a question. Um, and, um, but I, this has changed significantly. We've had probably maybe as many as ten iterations of how this might lay out on the site. And so this changed significantly where things were located as um the community working group talked through, um, through what they were concerned about and actually much better design than what we started with, I would say.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I guess a follow-up question then would be, just to clarify for the community, was going into this community working group, was it non-negotiable that there would be eight turf baseball fields?
I'm trying to remember if, if there was eight specifically identified. I think we were close to that number going into it because within that first meeting, um, I believe all eight baseball fields, baseball, softball fields were shown in the initial rendering. I mean, I think basically all of the components that you're seeing in the final, well, in this, in this um step of the design were there to sort of, city administrator's homes' point. Um, specific design details came over the course of those three meetings, as you saw in the packet, like uh with the pickleball courts in particular, that initial design versus the feedback of um separation, delineation within the space, as well as those, you know, uh, uh, water fountain features or water access features, evolution. Same with uh the outdoor gathering space and the playground. Um, now, we didn't get into like final details within the playground features, but you know, that it's all ages, abilities, um, those types of conversations. But I'm, yes, yes, Ben's giving me that, yes.
And it was part of the importance of the operating as a facility and the pro forma for outdoor.
Yeah, which I appreciate, but we still really haven't seen. And I guess, again, that question, I, I'll just reiterate some other comments that have been made. I would love to see an operating model before we move forward. Uh, what might happen to other baseball, softball assets in our park system? How might community members be reassured of access to other spaces?
Yep, so a couple of things. We think there'll still be activity at those other ball fields and talking with both the youth softball association and the youth baseball association that they still, they're at the point where they have more um players to use their um primary facilities than they have fields at those primary facilities for. So we still um think those um complexes will be busy. And I think with the opportunity to um set this up as a great primary tournament location, it will relieve some of the pressure on those other sites that will, in the end, I think, make them more available to other community members or smaller groups or individuals or families looking um for those ball field access opportunities.
Okay, and last question, but a big one.
Yeah.
How many of these materials are produced in the U.S.? I mean, how much impact are we potentially considering from uncertain tariffs, larger economic uncertainty, price changes? I mean, I, I guess, how much confidence can we have that sixty-five million dollars, if we do it quickly, right? Doesn't end up in a situation where we're accepting an alternate bid that doesn't include some of these community features?
Yeah, so when we've um done the last cost estimate with Knutson, they spoke to their trade partners and estimating what that cost is going to be for primarily the twenty-twenty-six construction season. So those were the numbers they were receiving. So those companies are taking things into account if there are some components that need to come in. Um, internationally, that, that they account for that. They do build a estimator contingency within the numbers that they provide us as well, trying to cushion for things like that where there could be a spike in a particular material cost or something like that. So I'm trying to utilize as much as we can that's um within the region or, or nearby. But they were trying to prepare the numbers in such a way that accounted for um potentially those spikes that you're referring to. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Bolt, how, how many artificial turf baseball fields do we have right now in the park system?
Zero.
And by having those, you extend the season on both ends, how, typically how much?
Yeah, so we'd be able to get out there in March where now we're waiting until the frost comes out of the ground and we can get out there and play hopefully by early um to middle of April for those high school seasons to start. So I, I would say we're adding two to three weeks on the front end, and then we're adding um two to three weeks on the tail end of the season as well when we're. And the other thing we do in the fall is try to um use some of those natural grass fields less so they can rehab and be ready again for the next year where, where you don't have that with artificial turf.
So the, the surrounding communities, high schools, do they have artificial turf baseball fields that you know of, or is it, is it pretty few and far between?
Few and far between for baseball fields. There are getting to be a few more of the rectangular sports fields that are artificial turf, but baseball fields, there's not, not many.
And then the, the, I, I was impressed with the, with the working group that it was such a wide-ranging group. Um, I've not seen that done before with Park and Rec is this much. Is that, would that be a true statement?
Uh, Councilmember, I, I mean, I think uh as we integrated uh folks within the sports communities as well as others with knowledge and expertise and overall advocacy, um, you know, be it accessibility, et cetera, um, I think building on what we did with the Soldier's Field Aquatics, um, I think the secondary um working group, I think, really building on that. So again, it's always a really fantastic process when you see folks with differing opinions and perspectives come together and get into conversations around where they can fill up their water bottle, water bottle in proximity and, and, but use the space in a way that um really all users can be happy with and some of the concessions, um, you know, of, of the give and take, I think that came through. Even, you know, again, in noting that there was a strong desire by the working group by way of their conversations with their fellow community members that ultimately they'd like to see both the outdoor and then indoor. And as you've heard, you know, from community members, um, just the piece of wanting this to all come together and ideally all come together at one time, but understanding the, the phasing and also to the same conversation you're having, um, the due diligence that has been and will continue to be done around the use and the um financial aspects of it.
And so you had seniors in there also, um, two people from senior that were helpful and two from handicap that, that were helpful?
Yep, and one.
And they sat, they sat together and had that discussion?
Yes, one in particular that's in, heavily involved with Special Olympics. So that was a particular perspective that they brought.
Okay, well, Mr. Bolt, was, was, we did presentations for the sales tax and, and you were a part of that sales tax extension that we had. Um, just one part of it, of the four. Um, is this, I mean, I was at twenty-five different presentations. I don't, I'm sure that you did more than that to the community, did you?
Probably.
Okay.
That was a long time ago already.
Well, I've been accused of that, my memory's not the best, but I try hard. Um, so, and, and no property taxes are going to build this. This is just going to be paid for by sales tax, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, and originally this is set up as an economic development investment, is that not what it is?
Yes.
And, and go back to Park and Rec, most of our Park and Rec programs are done with partnerships. We're pretty proud of that partnerships with all the different groups in Rochester, is that correct?
We have a lot of great partners.
We don't, I mean, we used to do swim lessons, I know at the rec center, we don't do swim lessons anymore as a Park and Rec employee.
Correct.
We used to teach tennis, we don't teach tennis anymore.
We partner, we, we have a tennis pro, so yeah, there's a partnership there as well where they bring in um the pros to do the tennis lesson.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a couple of questions regarding the uh potential phase two, uh, where the playfield is a little bit more spaced than that, a hun, a, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet potential. Can you talk a little bit more about uh between when we made the decision to, in February, to pick the site and to uh, to lean in on outdoor for phase one? What kind of strategic planning or work or partnerships have you been uh engaged in regarding planning for down the road with phase two?
It's a great question, Council President. We've, uh, to be honest, we, we've focused in on the developing the design of the outdoor components. We've um continued to have some preliminary conversations on that phase two. I think one um detail about phase two is the potential for that south uh commercial lot area as being an opportunity to provide some investment that go, could go towards that phase two um development uh in the future. But um we've spent the bulk of our time trying to continue on the design path and the development of the pro forma and the outdoor components over the last few months.
Uh, Councilmember Palmer.
Motion?
Oh, go ahead, yes.
I'll make a motion approving the schematic uh design for the Rochester Sports and Recreation Complex, project number J two eight seven zero.
Uh, motion made by Councilmember Palmer, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wall, Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
Well, I, I'm just excited that this is moving forward and, and I'm excited to see it um, um, come together. And, and thank you for all your hard work. I know that it's been um hard for you to, to, to um figure all this out, but I'm excited to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
I have some prepared remarks, but just a couple of before that. Um, I looked up the average size of a baseball field, it's one hundred eight thousand to one hundred twenty thousand. So a hundred and twenty-eight thousand would be slightly larger than your average baseball field. Uh, second, unprepared, uh, it just occurs to me that I have one granddaughter who's playing in a statewide tournament in the Twin Cities this, uh, this, uh, weekend. Another granddaughter who's playing in a similar tournament, but a different place in the Twin Cities. And that second granddaughter playing in a national tournament, hosted luckily for them and us in the Twin Cities. Uh, uh, teams coming from many states, their first game is eight AM on Thursday morning. So uh people who come from Nebraska and Wyoming uh will be here for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, uh, really a, a great boost. Uh, on to uh the notes that I made prior to uh coming today. I'll be voting to approve the design as I'm convinced this will be a regional and community asset. Yeah, I'm disappointed that we can't have it all, both indoor and outdoor. It is unreasonable to suggest that we could do it all when the money raised by sales tax will go exactly to what was proposed originally. Community input will be valuable as we enter phase two. Some have suggested that we halt the process. Any halting of the process will add dollars to the project monthly, reducing the good we are able to do with sixty-five million dollars entrusted to us. It has been suggested that we scale back the outdoor. Onto the notes that I made prior to coming today. I'll be voting to approve the design as I'm convinced this will be a regional and community asset. Yeah, I'm disappointed that we can't have it all, both indoor and outdoor. It is unreasonable to suggest that we could do it all when the money raised by sales tax will go exactly to what was proposed originally. Community input will be valuable as we enter Phase Two. Some have suggested that we halt the process. Any halting of the process will add dollars to the project monthly, reducing the good we are able to do with $65 million entrusted to us. It has been suggested that we scale back the outdoor facilities and build a more modest indoor/outdoor facility. That will mean failure for the regional aspect of the project. We will not be able to recruit teams to a venue of scaled-back facilities. That means fewer dollars for city businesses who will cater to visiting teams, and it means more dollars from the city to support a facility that will not provide a break-even bottom line. It's easy to find naysayers on the project, just look at Facebook. It's always the people who are against who post their opinions on any subject. I do appreciate the one community member who took time to come this night and ask very reasonable questions, thank you. I've sought out the opinions of many on this project and the prevailing attitude is one of excitement. I serve on the Rochester Sports Commission, that commission is eager to add its muscle to the sports complex. I want a facility that will enjoy success from day one, success that will inspire moving on to Phase Two. If we pare back our plans, we will have built another nice park for the city, an admirable goal, but not the scope of a project that will benefit the city in many ways, including our community's use of the facility more days of the week than the tournament offerings. We have had professionals who have helped us hone the plan over four years. We have staff who have given blood, sweat, and tears to the project. We have a well-rounded community group help in refining plans to make it an even better sports complex. I urge the council to move ahead with the design in anticipation of the great things that lie ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you for your work. I'd just like to say I know a lot of work has gone into this. And I'd also just like to recognize that I've also reached out to quite a few community members, and I've yet to encounter a community member, even in the sports community, who's excited about this. And I've said, you know, it would save me a trip every now and then, but I'm concerned about community access, and I think there's a broader case to be made first. And so I would really like to see an operating model before I feel comfortable supporting this. I feel like there are a lot of assumptions that are built into how many tournaments we need, the cost of the project, and what the benefit is to the community, whether that's the combination of sales and lodging, tax, and other benefits. Maybe it's just that I'm new to this process being on the council this year, but I don't feel like I have enough information just yet. I've heard from a variety of people in a variety of roles who aren't, you know, excited and see themselves represented here. And I know we've also gone through the strategic priorities setting process and come to inclusive decision-making, inclusive growth management, and really centering this idea that we have to go with the community and bring the community along in these projects. I just feel a gap here. And also, despite the Soldier's Field pool being a really successful community engagement process that designed elements of that pool and changed it significantly, there was a real risk in the operating model that wasn't considered in that process, and we ended up last year with a, you know, several hundred thousand dollar operating loss on the staffing, which wasn't considered in conjunction with the construction elements. And so for those reasons, I'm not ready to support this tonight, and I appreciate that I might be in the future, but I just, I'm not feeling the, you know, even from folks on this community working group that I reached out to today, they said they felt like it was a fair process, that they had some input within the confines of we're doing eight outdoor baseball fields.
Uh, councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I guess, again, I have the advantage of being around for, since this started and kind of have a full view of this. I do come tonight with the idea that I want to support this and move it forward, this vote, and as City Administrator Zelmz points out, and there's going to be two or three other ones coming up, and we can't reopen it each time and say, how do we want this to be different? Well, and I shouldn't say we can't, we can. It's just not an efficient operation. I guess my take is our city did ourselves a disservice during some of the sales tax information and putting things out that I think we ended up, in our hopes of getting the sales tax approved, we sort of became whatever anybody wanted underneath the guise of the Sports Foundation. And I also think we do ourselves a disservice because we're not of one mind on this, and that also confuses the community. So this has always been to me, this always started out as first and foremost, this idea of like an economic development project that also could benefit the community, and I think we're still working towards that high-level goal. And again, I'm, the one thing I'm uncomfortable with tonight is we still call it Phase One, as if we're ready to do Phase Two, and I just don't think that's the case. We're ready to do Phase One, and we're going to spend our money doing that, and we might get a little bit more money by selling off the part that's going to be, you know, commercial or the part that's going to be residential, and that should go into this fund then. But I don't know where the funds come from for Phase Two, because we're not going to do another sales tax, we're not, you know, so I don't think of this as Phase One, and we have to get done with that so we can start Phase Two. Phase Two is, the first part of that is fundraising. So I don't care for the language, but it's not my language, but I'll just share that and where I'm at tonight. Thanks.
I'll just share, in February, I supported this, and I want to support this, and I want to support it enthusiastically, but I feel like we are losing the expectations game among our community members. They had expectations, rightly or wrongly, it was out there in the community, and I hear councilmember Palmer, and I know that three, four years ago, there were numerous communications events and forums, but we need that now. We need to sell what we have here to our community and tell them about that this is an economic development project, that baseball is a niche for us that will attract tournaments here. I agree with councilmember Miller, I really want to see, you know, stronger evidence of that operating model as to, you know, the success of that. What I fear the most is, given that we are playing the expectations games with our community, that what we're looking at tonight, when you come back with those bid packages, we're going to have to pare down more. And that is not what I want to be able, want to do without us going out in the community and meeting the expectations that we, what we expect that we're going to be able to deliver. So I need more of that. I will vote for this this evening because what I see here is, when it comes to eight ball fields, to sports fields, the pickleball courts, it's all the same, we've moved things around, and I appreciate the community impact on how that design is, but it is $65 million, it is what it is here, and the site is the site that we selected in February. So I will support it, but with nervous expectations. Councilmember Doring.
You're muted.
You're muted, councilmember Doring.
Thank you, you wish, you know, you'd think you'd figure out Zoom by now, right, or Teams. I appreciate the comments of all my colleagues, and I appreciate the passion and the insights that you've brought to this conversation. I really appreciate the presentation as well. I came tonight with an open mind, hoping to be able to support moving forward, I simply cannot. At this point, I agree a lot with council, councilmember Miller's point of view, that I would really like to have a cleaner and better understanding of the operational model before proceeding with the schematic design. I appreciate City Administrator Zelmz saying that we need to know what we're going to build before we can decide how we're going to operate it. I would argue that we need to know how we're going to operate a community asset before we build that community asset. I think it's just a philosophical difference that I am simply not in a position tonight to overcome, especially listening to those members of the community who have reached out to me, who are also across the sports community in a variety of subjects who aren't particularly excited about this particular facility, simply because they are worried about access and that it isn't really for the community. I appreciate councilmember Keen, I appreciate your statement saying that you understood this as a, to be a regional economic driver that could benefit the community. I would argue that this is a economic driver that absolutely should benefit the community, and I want to see that should before proceeding. So I plan to not support this this evening. I'm excited to see what comes back in the future, so maybe I can more enthusiastically support it in the future. But that all being said, I really appreciate the hard work of the community members as well as the city staff who have put their energy into this project so far.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Mr. Bolt and staff, thanks for your hard work on this project. It's been a long road. I just got a quick question for you. When we went to the taxpayers with this a few years ago, whatever it was, a year ago, two years ago, is this delivering on what we presented to the taxpayers?
That's a loaded question, I would say, potentially, you know-
Is this what was presented to the taxpayers?
This specific design is not what was presented to the taxpayers. It was an indoor and outdoor components for an athletic or sports complex that was presented.
And it was always shown as phased, because even in that very, very-
Okay, let me rephrase the question.
-it was not penciling in the $65 million.
Right, let me reframe the question. Is this, is this proposal of Phase One, what was shown?
It was outdoor sports fields at that time in 2023, it was shown as to be more rectangular fields than ball fields, but it was artificial turf, outdoor sports fields as part of that.
And it takes eight, and it takes eight ball diamonds to make a tournament weekend profitable, attractive?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor Norton.
Thank you, I've remained quiet, and I think all of you know where I stand on this issue, but I don't want to let it go without adding my voice here. It has been my opinion since the beginning that we failed to involve the community at the very beginning, that we went to the legislature and asked for something that the community didn't understand, and frankly, we didn't understand what we were asking for. There were some that wanted a competitive economic development component to it, that is true. When we finally got around to talking to the community, they told us they wanted something for them. They wanted something indoor and outdoor, they wanted all their wants and needs, which they poured into an entire summer worth of community input on little sticky notes that we had all over the place, and this is not what they told us they wanted. I do understand and will agree that there were some, a small handful, who had decided of the competitive group that this is what they, maybe not baseball, in fact, the first ones I saw weren't baseball at all, that's come around a year or so after we started this process. But it's not what the community believed they were voting for, it's not what the community wants. And so, you know, I always, as you know, have urged that we take a pause and we go back and we build something that will be for the community as well as, you know, if we want something that has some economic development, you know, advantage to it. The community did not understand that Phase Two would be the part for them. They did not understand that, and that's been clear from the comments that we've gotten, all of us have gotten, and the feedback at the committees as well. So I think the community is having a bit of a shock. It's clear to me that from the very beginning, that despite my concerns, the community's concerns, we've moved ahead with the initial want of that group of sports folks that wanted a competitive field. That's what we're giving us, that's what we have. I will say, I think your proposal is going to do, hopefully, what you think it will. I think it is going to be beautiful. I think if you can get people to come to Rochester for these tournaments, knowing that we can't support this locally, we don't have enough baseball to support this as a competitive, it's not for Rochester, it has to bring people in from other areas, if you can do that. And again, that pro forma is so important on this, we have to know that they will choose Rochester over anywhere else. And I'm not convinced yet that you've shown us that, so I'm hoping you continue the work on that. So I guess I'm concerned, it seems like this is moving ahead, but I just want to say to the community, I understand this isn't what you wanted. I think some of the council members understand that this isn't what they wanted, but we are moving ahead with something that will provide some economic development for the community. I do worry seriously about, you're not going to get Phase Two from the legislature, so you have to have a way, and I want to know what that way is for the Phase Two before we keep moving ahead. That's part of the, you know, internal fight I have. People want to know how you're going to pay for Phase Two to get all the things that they're maybe willing to wait for now until this gets built, but it can't just be, oh, we'll get to it, we hope we'll have money, or the legislature will give us money. I don't think you're going to get it there. The legislators have told us how disappointed they are that we're doing Phase One without a community input part of it. They thought they were giving it to the community. So I want you, I guess I'm asking you, have that planned for Phase Two? Where's the money from? How can you sell the rest of the land that you have or budget for Phase Two that can be done when Phase One is done in a timely manner?
Question has been called. Clerk Queso, please call the row.
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Nay.
Councilmember Wall.
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Doring.
Nay.
Council President Schubring.
Aye.
Motion carries five to two.
Uh, we will take a seven-minute break. We will take a seven minute break. Andy. And take a seat, we are going to get started. Mr. Skolnick, we are getting started. Our next item under reports and recommendations is our RPD drone program update and contract with Exxon, Exion, Exxon Enterprises. Chief Franklin.
Yes, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor and City Administrators Elms, thank you for this opportunity to present really an exciting opportunity that we have in front of us. I'm here with Captain John Turk. I'm going to go through the presentation, then we'll stand for any questions at the end of it.
Can you stop, Chief, can you stop for a minute? Councilmember Doring, can you see Chief Franklin? Do you mind, Chief, coming to the podium so that Councilmember Doring can see your presentation?
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Not at all. How's that, sir?
Yep.
All right.
I still can't, I still can't see the chief, but that's okay.
That may, that may be because he shares the height that I have.
I'll I'll just use my imagination. There we go. You're a good looking man, Chief Franklin. Thank you so much.
I'll trade that for a yes vote, sir. Thank you. All right, it's important to put some context in here. This is not a new concept for the Rochester Police Department. This is truthfully just an expansion of our current drone program. Rochester PD, one of our core values is innovation. I'm very proud of that core value and we've quite frankly been leaning into technology as you've heard me speak to this group several times about technology and advancements. We've been flying drones since 2017 through the purchase of our first drone in 2017. So we were an early adopter of this technology. I can tell you that several advancements in this technology have been made over the last eight years. Fast forward to today where we have a total of nine drones as outlined today and 15 different drone pilots within the organization. I'm very proud of that. And then to where we're headed to is this new concept called drone as a first responder here, quite frankly, being rolled out across the country and we're super excited about this opportunity in front of us today. Kind of how we got here, if you remember, that we that back in March, we asked for your permission to apply for a grant to get funding for what I guess I will call a pilot project to prove to provide proof of concept for this drone as a first responder project. And we were happy to be notified in May of this year that we are in fact were approved for the full funding for our pilot project, which will give us full funding for a five year pilot project, which is a little bit long, but I can explain that towards the end there. And that's thankfully to some of our partners here in the community, specifically Mayo Clinic, and we received that grant from them and I'm very thankful to them for this opportunity. I have just a little bit of a video here to just kind of give you a visualization of what drone as a first responder looks like. And I'll ask Jan to push play.
For the people with the toughest jobs in the world, having the right information at the right time is the difference between success and failure, between life and death. And every second counts. Skydio Dock for X10. Station docked X10s where critical work happens. Get airborne in 20 seconds. Operate remotely from anywhere in the world and get the data you need to act. X10 features category leading visual and thermal sensors to capture the details you need with the modularity and versatility for any mission. Dock keeps your drones ready to fly, even in the toughest conditions. For public safety agencies, Skydio DFR Command is the ultimate software suite for drone operations. Respond to incidents with a single click. Share live video with Readylink. And use augmented reality overlays for precise visual orientation. Manage your fleet, upload evidence and build community trust. It's all at your command.
So this is a technology that we're embarking on and asking for permission or for approval to 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 use here in the city of Rochester. Again, we are already using drones. We're already using them. The difference here in the main is that hive concept or the docking station concept kind of strategically placed throughout the city. This particular pilot project includes two different docking stations with two drones strategically placed within the city so that we can auto launch them from there. The difference being, for example, if if we're going to launch a drone today, the officer has to make sure that they're in a safe space to operate the drone. They have to make sure that they have kind of a spotter for the drone. It's a little bit more time intensive, a resource intensive versus the concept as drone as first responder is that auto launch, two calls for service, that rapid response, getting that real time situational awareness for police officers responding to incidents in the city. It's a pretty incredible technology. We're, as much as I would love to sit here and say that we are the first in the country doing this, we are not. In fact, Chula Vista Police Department in California has been on the cutting edge of this from day one and and they're an agency that we've had multiple conversations with on how they have rolled out their DFR program. There, as you can see, some of the numbers here, Chula Vista is is launching the drone about 1,100 times between the months of March and June there. So they're significantly launching the drones and getting that real time situational awareness for police officers on scene. Although they were the first, this technology is is increasing across the country. As you can see, though, the drone response time that they're experiencing is priority one calls for service, 3.7 minutes to priority one calls for service, 4.9 to priority two. So again, what what they're finding is the drones are definitely beating the police officers onto the scene, providing that real time information back to the officers responding. As I said before, again, this has been rolled out across the country, different agencies that have it. This is just a quick snapshot, quite frankly, just representing from east coast to west coast. It doesn't really matter that there's several agencies adopting this technology. Again, I'd love to say that we're even the first in the state of Minnesota, but we're we're not. The city of Minnetoka just voted 7-0 council support about a month ago for Minnetoka to roll out their program and Brooklyn Park PD is is very, very shortly behind us. So if if all goes well, we'll be number two in the state here. This is not a concept that we've just kind of willy nilly stumbled upon. We actually tested this and tried proof of concept with one of our detectives drone pilots, actually testing drone launches from different locations in the city to see, test this proof of concept to see if that our drones and our drone launches could could beat the police officers to the scene and again, provide that incredible information. And what we found is is based on different locations in the city that we can get a drone on scene with eyes on a critical incident, a priority one call for service, a crime in progress, oftentimes violent crimes, we can get a drone on scene in under three minutes. And I got three different case studies that I want to highlight because I think this is incredibly important. On one particular gunshot call for service, we launched the drones. We located a party of intoxicated subjects slamming doors and we were able to deescalate that situation. So think about this from the perspective of the officer that's responding. They're called to a shot fired. That's how the call came out. But by launching the drone and getting eyes on that real time situational awareness, they were able to say, no, that's not a gunshot call for service. That's just somebody actively being loud slamming doors. And the officers were able to de, like kind of bring the tension down in in their response to that in that call. I have an example of increased situational awareness. There was a violent domestic suspect, domestic assault suspect that fled on foot. The drone was able to locate that suspect in under 10 minutes, allowing officers to, you know, the use of minimal force to have to take that person into custody because we knew right where their location was. We knew right where to locate that individual, taking him into custody. And then increased officer safety. We received information of an armed subject with a gun inside of a car and possible threats to use it. A drone was able to locate the vehicle and the associated individuals, allowing officers time, again, because information is power in these very complex, fluid and dynamic situations. Information is power. So in telling the officers responding so that they were able to accurately plan their approach, securing both the suspect and the firearm in that particular call for service. Again, our proof of concepts that we tested last summer, again, I'll just point out that we were able to get kind of that real time situational awareness in less than three minutes. I mean, if we expand our program, again, what we're looking to accomplish here and what we have funding to accomplish here is to take two permanently docked drones strategically located in the city. We're working through FAA waivers to fly that beyond that visual line of sight. It's that rapid deployment technology, that live feedback to dispatch to officers, giving them situational awareness. Why should we do this? We should do this for officer safety. And again, these stories are compelling. These case study stories that we've already produced are pretty compelling just from the, again, just from the tension deescalation standpoint, I think is incredibly powerful, but also from the standpoint of we're going to get eyes on real time situations is is incredibly powerful as well. Response times. And again, the company that we want to contract with, Skydio, will come out and help us strategically map kind of where the best, most optimal radius for these drones are to give us maximum coverage. I will tell you that two drones does not give us 100% coverage for the city. I think two drones gets us.
About two thirds of it.
About two thirds of the city. We would need three to get about 95% of the city if we really wanted to have full drone coverage in the entire city of Rochester, but we figured we'd start with two and that's what we got the funding for. And then just again, those safer outcomes and that better real time situational awareness. This is, this is not just a police tool. We're we're kind of the owners and the champions of the project, but this very much is a city tool. I know that other entities, RPU is flying drones for line management. There certainly is an emergency management component this with damage assessment. Most recently, on June 26th, the storms, we could have used drones for, you know, road closers, damage assessments, things like that. The drones today have incredible FLIR technology on them for firefighting applications, including like being able to look at a house fire and see certain hotspots within the within the house and giving real information for firefighters saying, hey, you might want to avoid this this section of the house and et cetera, in looking for people in there. Missing children, I can't tell you enough how valuable this would be for missing children. And then I'll just finally end with one of the main tools that law enforcement used to catch Vance Bolter in the recent legislative shootings and homicide was the use of a drone as he hunkered down in a field. They used drone technology to help facilitate his capture. We have spoken with both Fire Chief Poole and Emergency Management and their support of of this project as kind of a citywide initiative as well. Some of the public safety concerns, because I know those are out there, and I'll just maybe address the right side of the slide here, is just just kind of a little bit of a mock up of the the radius if the drones were positioned in that in those particular locations. But again, some of the safety concerns and the privacy concerns that need to be addressed is we're not going to use them for general surveillance. We have already been flying drones, as I said before, for several years. There are nine warrantless exceptions to when you can fly a drone as outlined by state statute. It's very similar to there's four exceptions when you can enter a house warrantlessly and there's seven exceptions when you can search a vehicle. So all of that stuff is outlined in state statute, which we are in compliance with. The Bureau of Criminal Apprehension requires that we report on this annually, which we do in the in the drone deployment, which we are in compliance with. One of the other things, so again, kind of what we're not going to do with them, this is not going to be like infringing on people's rights. This is going to be deployed for crimes in progress in in particular violent crimes to give us a real time situational awareness. We plan on creating kind of this data transparency portal that we can have online so that people can know when we're flying and how we're using the the drones. Again, as I alluded to, the annual reporting for the BCA. One of the other things that in talking with my team, and actually I think it was Captain Turk's idea, is, you know, one of the ways we can safeguard some of this privacy too is we can, when the drone launches, instead of, you know, kind of having the camera at a 45 degree angle, kind of videotaping its route, we can point the camera up until it gets to the location that it's supposed to be at. Again, safeguarding some of that data collection piece that we're that we're that we're trying to avoid. And then just bullet point five, this is actually outlined in state statute. I think that was one of the council members questioned in reference to, you know, why does it take seven days to delete data? Our goal will be to delete it earlier. The way the statute is written is it's all the non criminal data is to be deleted as soon as possible, no later than seven days. So that's that's the language that we adopted and put into into our policy and into this presentation. And then obviously, we're balancing that with responsibility. And then obviously, we're balancing that with responsible airspace use. Obviously, we have Mayo Clinic helicopters coming through the area, and so we've had discussions with them as well of what this looks like. Obviously, Mayo is in support of this, they're very excited, as I believe they have plans for use of drones in the future, and so they're very excited to kind of learn from our pilot project here as well. And so what we're looking at here, and the requests that I have, or the request for council action that we have, is you've already approved the, the application for the grant. We've been awarded the grant. I ask that you approve the funding, that we can take the funding in and actually execute a contract. The nice thing is, Skydio Company is separate from Axon, but there is a partnership there so we can actually just kind of piggyback this contract into our Axon contract as well. One of the things that I think was very wise that fell into place is the fact that this is a five-year pilot project. I know, I understand that's a long time, but actually the five years really kind of lines up very nicely when our Axon contract is going to expire anyways, and we'll have the discussion then. And by then, I hope to have proved the value of this program. If the value's not there, then, then we won't, we won't re-up the contract. But all the technology that we have with Axon, including this, will have to be reevaluated in 2030. So I will stand for any questions, I guess.
Thank you, Chief. Great presentation and just, yeah, exciting, exciting ventures. My question has to do with the staffing of the drones or the operating and monitoring. Does that entail additional staff on your part?
That's a great question, Council President, thank you. We're going to use a crawl, walk, run approach, and I probably should have thrown a slide in there. You know, this, this capability is probably not going to start out as 24/7. It's, we're going to slow-walk it, you know, build it out for a set of days with the staffing that we have. We are going to appoint and take one officer that we have and make them point so that there's ownership of this project, build, buy-in, and champion the, and champion this, this initiative within the organization. We have already inquired, some of our dispatchers are interested in becoming drone pilots. I would welcome, dare I say, even some firefighters as drone pilots, so I welcome that partnership as well. But again, we have 15 pilots, we're building out our pilot pool. The nice thing about this program versus what we do today, right? So again, as I said before, today, we're still launching drones. We did launch the drone on the most recent homicide that we had on July 3rd. The difference is, the officer had to drive to a safe location, get a spotter, launch the drone, and it was very time-intensive and resource-intensive. This will actually save us on resources where a detective working, the drone can auto-launch, a detective can pick it up from their desk and actually fly it from their desk, or from, or dispatcher could pick it up and fly it from, from their console or whatever. So we don't have 100% of the staffing model built out. Again, we're going to start small and then expand it. There's also an opportunity to potentially perhaps hire retired police officers that are already drone pilots as seasonal part-time temp employees in the future. That's an idea. And then the staffing model utilizing on-duty patrol officers that are just saying, hey, today you're flying the drone and you're taking a shift as the drone pilot in kind of a real-time crime center.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. Chief Franklin, Chula Vista is about twice as big as us in population, about the same size in terms of square miles. In their case study, they sent drones out almost 10 times a day. Can you imagine us sending out five times a day?
That's a great question. Again, we would, we'd follow, we'd follow those nine warrantless exceptions on when we, when we would launch the drones. We recently attended a Benchmark Cities Conference with other agencies that are launching drones. I think there's an agency in Texas that was doing about eight to 10 a day. I would suspect it's going to be in that range of five to seven times a day. I can't speak for certain, but we're fairly busy.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. On 41st Street, you have a camera center. Is that still there?
Right.
So would you not use that for your drones to follow those there?
Yeah, Councilmember, thanks for the question. Yeah, so we still have the kind of real-time crime center video monitoring room. We would use that primarily when we want to maybe have like dedicated hours. Let's say, example, we did some studies on when we have calls for service and the best times a day to staff it, so there's been a lot of data collection done. So an example would be Friday night from 5:00 PM to 3:00 AM. We have a 100% dedicated pilot that could be sitting in that room, ready, ready to go to fly, watching the calls come in, making sure one meets the criteria, and deploy the drone.
If I remember from, from presentation there, all of our officers have cameras and all the supervisors can go into those cameras and see real-time data right now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and one of the reasons for that is for safety of the officers and also safety of the public, but more for the officers that they can, hey, look at this, or are you okay? Am I kind of following that?
That's correct. One opportunity with this particular drone program is that we're adopting a new piece of software that gives us a dashboard of a map of the city. And with that, it will actually bring in, you can pull in the officer's body camera, their squad car camera, and the drones will actually show up also on the screen at the same time. So as somebody working in the center flying it, but as supervisors in the field or others, we can draw kind of a map or a square or something, or a circle around all of those three things, like the squad car, body camera, and the drone, and I'll instantaneously put them all up on a dashboard, and we can watch all of those things happening in real-time, all at the same time. So there's significant information gathering and decision-making capabilities that this system and the corresponding software that's going to allow us to get some very strong situational awareness for, for response.
And so, so in the public, you don't really have an expectation of privacy, do you?
Not when you're just out in general, kind of, you know, walking around in public areas.
And, and we have quite a few cameras that you can look at, at any one time now, fixed cameras, correct?
Correct.
You also can go to someone's house and say, I know you have a camera, can we look at your, your feed? And we do that for, for efficiency?
Correct. I mean, many cases now, obviously, it's well-known, people have, you know, camera systems in their homes, and so when we're doing investigating and canvassing an area after a crime has taken place, we will start knocking on doors, asking if people have cameras, footage that's available that they're willing to provide to us.
Okay. And I had that experience with the Sheriff's Department, there was a death and a dead body, and, and they wanted to see it to see if they could track the car, so I thought that was pretty efficient. The question I have for the chief, since you're the money person, and, you know, Captain Turk's not, just two, why not get three, do 95% and, and do this right the first time?
I appreciate that question, Councilmember. We felt that two was the more judicious approach when going for the grant. I think we felt if we went for three, that would, it would have priced us out of competition. And so to really get us to a point where we could, zero cost, zero budget levy increase to the city, we asked, we only asked for two. We did price it out at three and, and looked at it and just said, eh, it looks a little steep to ask for.
Do you remember ballpark number, what the third one was?
So I mean, if you divide it out, it's about, it's about $50,000 a drone per year over five years.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, some of my questions were answered, and I know they're difficult, like, Councilmember Wall, looking at like number of times it happens, the, but part of that is whatever we want to use them for, right? When you talk about priority one, priority two, priority three, that, and that's going to be the judgment, and I've had the tour with, with your, your, about the, all the other cameras, both, that, that, that thing, but I'm still having an operational trouble thinking that what would, what would, who's the decision-maker that says this is a drone opportunity as opposed, is that a dispatcher? Is that a, you know, I, I don't see how it's, how it works.
Yeah, so, so dispatch is a pretty complex environment where calls are given different priorities, obviously in-progress, violent calls for service versus maybe priority two where a person had just left the scene, and so the scene is a little bit stabilized and all the way down to priority three and four where, you know, four just be, hey, I got home from the weekend and my garage was burglarized. Obviously, we wouldn't launch on those, but we'd be primarily launching on priority ones and twos where we're actually...
In process.
In progress, certain violent, certainly violent crimes for service and in-progress stuff.
And that would be the, the dispatch call to say this is thing, or is this a duty officer? I, I'm not...
Yeah, so there'd be a whole protocol put in place that we'd work with dispatch on pushing the button for auto-launching for the calls, and there's a whole CAD integration so that basically the CAD system communicates with the drone to tell it where to go based on the incoming call for service. And I think you're, you're touching on a little bit of a point, if I could maybe digress for just a quick second. I mean, if you think about how 911 calls for service actually work, you know, the crime happens or the incident happens, it takes, you know, 60, 30 to 60 seconds for somebody even to dial 911. The dispatcher's got to type in all the data, and so we're always, we're, why this is so important and why I'm so excited about this is it's, it gets us to the scene that much quicker to give us real-time information when we're already behind the curve just based on how life works in the whole reporting system.
Okay. All right. The other one, again, I appreciate the, getting the grant and maybe able to do this out. I understand the five-year thing, but I did look out in 2030, and you're going to, we're going to come upon this Axon contract, and like so many of these things, these are new and very helpful technologies, but they're all additive. I haven't seen one yet that we're going to do that's actually productive and it reduces either staffing or other technology, or reduces the number of units. Where, do, do any of these things come with the idea of making things more efficient as opposed to, you know, adding to the capability?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I think, I'm going to answer that in two different ways. I, I think that's the challenge for law enforcement right now, and it's actually a discussion I've had with the CEOs of Axon, saying, you, you guys are innovating this technology faster than law enforcement can actually adopt, adopt it. Number one, number two is you're kind of pricing us out of the market here, and it's coming so fast and furious. Where law enforcement is today, it's, it's super exciting but also somewhat scary. Where law enforcement is today is, is I equate it to like the dial-up era, and you're about to see an S-curve of technology, this wave of technology that's about to hit public safety, government here. What law enforcement looks like today is not what it's going to look like in five years. And so it's up to us, like you're saying, to balance what technology do we really want and need that's really going to make for the more efficient and effective officer? And I can tell you, we are doing those calculations. One of the approvals that you guys have made in the past was the use of the body warrant cameras and the AI technology for report writing. We are finding that there is a cost-benefit analysis that we're saving about 20 minutes to 25 minutes per report. The officers, excuse me, the officers is, has a net gain of 25 minutes back of his time savings on reports. Now, we have not quantified that into, well, can I, you know, can I cut cops, but, you know, we're trying to be judicious about that and balancing our asks with all the other city asks as well. And an example of that is we only asked for one additional cop in this 2026 budget, and that's for an issue that is really emerging, and that's some of the CSAM, excuse me, child sexual assault material, stuff that's, that's really kind of peaking, if you will. And so again, we're judicious in our asks, but we are doing those, those internal evaluations of how do we build out the more effective and efficient police officer for the future? I will also say that we've been a little bit judicious on what we've come and asked this council for. I know the mayor had the opportunity to go out to Axon and, and look at some of the technology. There's some stuff out there that I want, I'm telling you, but that, that I haven't come ask you for yet. But it's because I understand that we have to balance that, and those discussions that we're having internally is, eh, do we really, like, we can only, one of my concerns is we can only adopt technology so quickly. Can we as an organization even, even adopt, like, implement this to, to leverage the full efficiencies? And so we're having those conversations and we're weighing those things internally.
Good. I appreciate having the discussion. I remember the thing with the report writing, and I didn't view that as something that we're going to save officers. To me, that was a really important job satisfaction thing, because that was one of the lowest satisfaction things on our officers' things. And I think that's a valid thing for us to invest in, but, but I'm also watching how much, you know, the, the old hold-ups at the liquor stores just don't happen anymore. There's no, policing has dramatically changed, but the only thing I see in this meeting is where we're going to get involved in something new as opposed to, we're going to do less of something else. And so I'm watching for that, and apparently, and glad to hear that you're watching for it too.
Councilmember Miller.
Thanks for the presentation. I'm glad that some data elements have come up, and I'll just echo what I think Councilmember Keen was getting to, of what sort of regular reporting we might expect out of this. I see the pilot data from both Chula Vista and, and here, but like, how, how can we expect to receive updated information about where this is engaged, what, what savings or what efficiencies it's building?
Yeah, so as far as like the deployment, the use, again, we plan on using that transparency portal to really communicate that as our forward-facing communication methodology. And again, we're going to continue to do that internal analysis of, of, of what this is saving us or how this is making us more efficient, efficient, you know, and quite frankly, to be really honest with you, I think it's going to be in the stories. I think, I think that the proof is going to be in the pudding, and, and from a police chief perspective, knowing that visceral physiological feeling that police officers have going to a shots-fired call and then being able to go, phew, okay, it's not shots-fired, I can relax a little bit. I don't know how to put a price tag on that. I, I really don't, and, and, but I know that there's a value to that.
Sure. And I also appreciate that the, the portal seems to be community-facing too, so building trust that these are being used in a very narrow set of high-priority calls, and I really hope that that can be a priority to, to proactively communicate to the community what this program does, and we're obviously, you know, making this decision, but helping us to, to make the case with the community of what additional public safety this builds and, and other aspects of how it's being used. So people don't, I mean, I'm sure people will post on Facebook, drones are flying around, right? But just however we can proactively make that case to the community. I, I did have another question about safety and just maybe technology. Obviously, Rochester is in a unique place with Mayo Clinic, lots of emergent helicopters flying into through downtown. What sort of safety mechanisms are in place, or how do these, at different heights, or how, how might we think about these with other things in the airspace?
Sure. I'll go and touch on it, and in case I miss something, you know, one of, one of the drone pilots is here tonight, Detective Alex Kendrick is in the back right here. And so what we've been doing right now is, leading up to this, is we want to be as prepared as possible. And so when we fly it, we're coordinating and calling Mayo Clinic's dispatch center that runs the helicopters in and out of Rochester, including visiting ones. And so we actually set up a radio communications link between the pilot, our drone pilot, and their comm center, so they will call and give us a heads-up and say, either we're taking off or there's a helicopter approaching from the northwest. And then, as they've had all their FAA training, they know to bring it in, land it, allow the preference, I mean, the priority, I should say, of that medical evac helicopter to come in, or just even other aircraft, manned aircraft in the area, they get a, that gets a priority. So the, the training that goes in, all the pilots have to be certified by the FAA, and so there's a lot of in place for a pilot just to take control and command. So we just had a meeting with, last week, with Mayo Clinic's helicopter staff, and we further refined the communications. Matter of fact, we established a now very dedicated radio channel that will be just between Mayo's dispatch center and our pilots, so we have constant communication all the time. So we're in active talks with them all the time to make sure that we will not conflict with air, air traffic.
Last question. For, I appreciate the, the anchoring to state statute, why seven days is the window. How, how is that video access controlled internally, right? Who has access to video footage of non-criminal, right? How can people feel reassured?
Yeah, so that's a great question, actually, and this dovetails into a previous decision that you made in council when we switched to the Axon, Axon RMS system. Because we are on Axon, actually, this video is uploaded in something called Axon Evidence, and it's automatically classified as drone or UAV footage, and so it is actually auto-set to delete. If nothing else, it is set to auto, auto-set delete out of our system after seven days. But I can tell you that we will, our records department will, will do it sooner if possible, but I think that's a source of strength for being... But I think that's a source of strength for being on Exxon RMS, I'm sorry, I use acronym, the records management system that we're currently on, that's a source of strength.
And you have access records of like, who's engaging with the video, who's accessing it, that history while it's stored?
All of that is 100% tracked, yep.
Thanks.
Mayor Norton.
Well, a couple of things. One, the tour I had of Exxon recently was quite eye-opening. It's not, you know, I work with the police department often, but it's not often that I get to try a taser. And just so you know, I hit the target in the chest and the thigh and put him out. So beware if I ever have a taser in my hand. It was actually quite an interesting experience. They also have state-of-the-art, as has been described, records management, and it's mind-boggling what they can do. I do worry a little bit about the escalating costs of this stuff, and I think that's something that we've talked about. We have to find a way to manage that, take what is good and works. And we have five years in this instance to figure out if this is really going to make it better or not. I did want to know if you could talk about when you use the drone and you are capturing what's happening on the ground, and charges are filed, or an arrest is made, and you put that information into the document and say, don't erase this in seven days, is that document, the video usable in a court of law?
Yeah, so that's a great question. The short answer is yes. In all of that police, it's classified as police data under Minnesota state statute. So all of those rules, it falls under the same governing rules. It's not dissimilar to, as Captain Turk says, we have officers with body-worn camera, so there's video footage there. We have squad camera videos. I think there's five different cameras in every squad car, so there's multiple cameras in squad cars. So all of that, this would just be another component of video that would fall under that governing management under the state statute.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think when you can get to the scene that quickly, and you're talking about two minutes, very short period of time, and you can get that high-level view, it would make, making your case easier, because it takes a while for the officers to get there. You already have some of it set up, so then it all feeds in together for that, hopefully, solid case that you can bring forward. So I really appreciate that, and I think, I do think, I appreciate the points that were made about collecting data, giving us feedback as we go. I think that'll be really helpful over the course of the next five years, and then managing the budgets with what works, what doesn't, what's a fun toy, and what's really making a difference in catching the bad guys, if you will.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on this item? Councilmember Palmer.
I'll make a motion, adopt a resolution supporting the acceptance of the quote from Exxon for purchase of two drones and related equipment, hardware, software, and services to further RPD's drones as first responders program.
Moved by Councilmember Palmer, seconded by Councilmember Keen. Any more to add? Councilmember Palmer.
Just a little bit, in your conversation, and I know that you're trying to get us to buy into this, but I really want to see a report on how often we use it with the fire department and how often we use it other than just for the police, because I think, you know, we can always charge them then for using the drone. And I think that that might be a cost-effective way of
The answer to that is, I would welcome the partnership, sir, for a third drone.
I know you're big on partnerships, and I appreciate
Point of order, it's all tax levy.
And I think for me, the number one thing is just safety of our officers and what that brings, and efficiencies from the report. So I'm glad that we're going to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Clerk Queso, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Councilmember Wall.
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Doring.
Aye.
Council President Schubing.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
You counsel. Thank you, Chief. Moving on to H3, which is local designation for Central Park as a historic landmark. Mayor Norton.
Thank you all. Most of the information and history was shared in the report narrative about Rochester's very first park. And you had some really great public comments that have more history than even I provided that was fun as well. So it's a simple ask. I'm asking that the Central Park be put on the heritage preservation's list of potential landmarks, and asking them to prioritize looking at this. And then they will come back with their recommendation at that point. So I'm not asking for your decision, I'm just asking for you to put this on the consideration by the HPC.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a question. So if we do then give HPC the authority to put it on their list, what is their process? Will they go through an evaluation? And what will that look like?
Thank you for the question. So if it would end up being city teammates that would probably do most of that evaluation and kind of going through our process of looking at historic significance and the period of significance and the historic integrity, and do that analysis, and share that with the Heritage Preservation Commission, for them to make a recommendation to move that forward. We do that in two phases, like a phase one, which we generally do a briefer one, making sure that it meets some of those criteria, and then kind of doing a phase two, which is really documentation of all of that information and putting together a report, and that's usually what comes before council.
So Ms. Woodward, do you have a sense for if a council tonight does move ahead with this, what kind of timeline and what, when would it come back to us? When would you expect it might come back to us?
The phase one should be fairly quick to do that part. I would say the phase two is probably going to take about 30 hours or so, and I think our heritage preservation coordinator, she spends about 20 hours a week on urban design and 20 hours on heritage preservation, so we would just prioritize that work. The only other thing that we would have to prioritize above doing that work is any applications that come forward to make sure that they're kind of going through. If somebody is doing something to their property that needs to be reviewed, we would prioritize that, but then we would kind of move forward with doing this analysis.
So we're looking, I guess where I'm kind of going is, I know that there is a statue that is coming, and so how, what's the timeframe for the statue? And what's the potential timeframe for a historic site?
I can speak to the statue portion. We have, because someone has asked earlier, I know you've been given the information, but for the record, the statue has now been fully paid for. We are raising funds for the shipping yet. Think we're there or very close to being able to have that. And we do have a little bit of issue with tariffs and some other stuff that we may have to pay that was unexpected. So we're just kind of holding our breath on that at this point. The hope was that this would be put in this fall. The Rotary Club donated money for the area and the park, and the Parks Department has put in some funds for that as well. And the hope was we could get it in before the snow flies this year, because the Rotary was doing this as part of their 100-year anniversary. So that was the hope. If for some reason it doesn't look like the phase one is not looking very positive, you know, we can stop and think about this. What I don't want to do is invest the time and money in putting a, you know, $80,000 statue in a park and then having the park be not utilized, you know, torn down for a building, right? I'm hoping to preserve the park so that we are assured that the statue, the history museum, the heritage museum with the home there, and the fountain, and all the other wonderful amenities in there, including, as Councilmember Palmer noted, the broken clock that we need to have fixed, that all those things will remain in place and be protected with a local historic preservation designation.
So Ms. Woodward, is, will those come together prospectively?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can complete a phase one in the next couple of weeks and provide an update to city council. And then if there is that information, then we could proceed with that phase two and probably provide a bit of a better timeline at that time, once we kind of evaluate what all of the information is there and what needs to be documented.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah, I have a logistics question. I think we asked this one time before with Soldiers Field and Silver Lake Park when we made those historic. Can't the city council just make it historic tonight and not have to waste staff time in looking at this? I think one of the speakers said this is the first park in Rochester, and it's obviously historic. And is there really, I mean, I'm assuming we'd get a 7-0 vote to do it tonight.
So within the UDC, there is a process outlined that we have to follow to landmark anything, any properties, and so that is an ordinance that we need to follow. And that includes the review by HPC and then coming back before city council, and includes public hearings.
Well, that's disappointing, because, I mean, this is, like one of the speakers said, this is a no-brainer, so, okay, disappointed in that.
Councilmember Miller.
Just a question as a new council member. How does HPC navigate a priority of this potential landmark list? I mean, is this bumping other things, or?
The priority is kind, you know, HPC identifies a number of things that they want to kind of see work being done from teammates. And so if this is kind of prioritized with council, we will take that to the next HPC meeting and share that with them and get some feedback, but also prioritize that work. I think we really haven't seen that before, so we'll see, and we'll have that conversation with the HPC.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're giving them leeway to do their work, too. I think this is a great project. I just don't really understand the interaction of how we should be interacting with HPC and directing reprioritization of what I would assume should have some input from them of what they want to work on in a given year, or does that happen?
There is, but there's also an opportunity, and I think we kind of outlined it in the UDC, that council can also provide recommendations for HPC to undertake certain work. So I think this falls within that as something that they'd like, that you would like to see as a body, and we would share that with HPC and reprioritize some of that other work.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Wall.
I think Mr. Creasel already has an example for all eight criteria on the back of an envelope that he could give us and just have it all done. Thank you, John.
Is there, Councilmember Keen?
I guess I'll just, again, I think I know where this is going, but I just want to ask, there's no staff recommendation out here. Is there any concern at staff side that this is like changing priorities, or this is the right way to go about it, or anything you want to add to the process?
I think we've included a bit of that process in the UDC, where this body can provide a recommendation to HPC to kind of undertake that work. I think this is the first time since, in my experience, it's happened here, but I think we outline that process in the UDC for a reason, to give that feedback to HPC from this body.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve initiating the evaluation of Central Park as a local historic landmark and asking the Historic Preservation Commission to prioritize its review for designation.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Palmer, seconded by Councilmember Miller. That's who I heard first. He wasn't necessarily the loudest, but he was first.
This microphone is louder than that one.
So any further discussion? Clerk Queso, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Councilmember Wall.
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Doring.
Aye.
Council President Schubing.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on, we have no council, we have no council initiated actions, no ordinance first readings, we have a ordinance second reading. Mr. Spindler, Craig, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item K1, an ordinance annexing to the city of Rochester approximately 33.56 acres of land located north and east of the intersection of 50th Avenue Northwest and Valley High Road Northwest.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Palmer. Clerk Queso, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Councilmember Wall.
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Doring.
Aye.
Council President Schubing.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
No tabled items, no other business that I have received. Councilmember Miller.
Just to bring up the point about the Lime scooters, could we perhaps expect an update on how the virtual parking zones and other, even as a written update? I've experienced that, and I appreciate the access concerns. Would just love to know how that's being managed.
Thank you. Councilmember Doring.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank city teammates and
Oh, you froze.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, just want to say thank you to the city teammates and city council members, to Mayor Norton, to City Administrator Zounds, to everyone who has reached out during this recent little mishap. Thank you for the Parks Department for making it easily accessible for emergency personnel to reach fallen cyclists on bike paths. Thank you to my new friend Carl, who called emergency personnel for me, and I look forward to joining you back in the council chambers soon.
Councilmember, and get well soon. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? So move. Councilmember Keen, do you have other business? Oh, I'm sorry. So moved by Councilmember Wall, seconded by Councilmember Miller. Seeing no indication of opposition, the motion passes by unanimous consent. We are adjourned.
Recording stopped.
Over there.